teenth planning board meeting. As we always start, we're going to review the. Someone have their.
Yeah.
Next minute. Uh, we're going to review the minutes from last month. Um, we had a lot of correspondence. It's on a copy if anyone would like to see it. We, um, paid a series of bills. We extended the bloom. Um, minor subdivision, uh, deadline. The SH twenty-nine West Neck LLC and White, um, extensions were passed to extend their deadlines. We had three public hearings, one for Weinstein Hensley, which was, uh, immediately adjourned. And we're going to take off with that tonight. We had one for the Carpeys, which was also adjourned to this evening. And one for Chukwudab LLC. And again, that was adjourned to this evening. So we're going to continue on all three. Uh, we briefly discussed the, um, McCann twelve Westmoreland Drive Wetlands application. And, um, left it open for some calculations that we asked for. Uh, other than that, it was, um, closed. And, um, that was the extent of the meeting. Uh, I recall about three hours. So, um, anyone had any reviewed this? Had any ideas? Questions, comments? If not, I make a motion to accept the July eleventh planning board minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a whole list of correspondence that I'm not going to get into the particulars of. It's, uh, listed on our agenda and copies are available at the door. We have three invoices to pay. The first for the Reiner Group and the amount of six hundred and sixty dollars. And this dealt with reviewing the Dawson and Diamond Wetlands application. Some correspondence regarding seven Chiquit Avenue. And, uh, reviewing the applicator, new application at one sixty-nine Ramon Drive. A total of four hours, six hundred and sixty dollars. And I think it's money well spent. So I make a motion to accept the Reiner Group's invoice, uh, for June services in the amount of six hundred and sixty dollars. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have another, uh, Reiner Group invoice, again for June. This, uh, addresses are, uh, reviewing of the six standing Lord Road, Three Borough, Paul Lane. Lot line modification, application. And, uh, attending the planning board meeting. Again, um, valuable, uh, response. And the total is nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. So I make a motion to accept the Reiner Group's June invoice for nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last invoice we have is for EHA. For services in June. July. Um, this is an extensive invoice, uh, but I think it reflects the, um, planning board setting up for future economies. Um, a lot of this had done with, uh, getting us through some of the initial applications and some of the, um, how to present and how to, um, um, properly handle these. Including setting up, uh, a resolution form, which was done in the McCann, uh, for the McCann Wetlands application. Uh, it's an extensive new format, not something that the town board did. It has a lot more information in it. And, uh, it was a, a template being set up, um, for future use. There was also a lot of, uh, correspondence, um, between the board and council regarding the Shepherd application. Obviously, I was not privy to that and so can't speak to it. But I, I think this is all good going forth, forward. Um, this is going to be, um, I think, an anomaly and the amount, uh, is ten thousand dollars, ten thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. Did, do any of you have any questions about it?
To offer a bill, I thought it was a mistake when I first saw it, but that's why I requested it. I went through it and, uh, could see where, where it could add up. And like you say, it's a good point, setting up the template of what, what we could future.
Exactly, exactly. Uh, it, it breaks it down to days and not necessarily tasks. I know that's a whole level of more accounting and time spending on breaking down the tasks to assign something to a specific, uh, application. Um, if we find a need for that in the future, maybe we'll request it. But I don't want to right now add to this bill to ask for that to be done. So.
And I, I think, as you were saying, there was a lot of things that were being done for the first time that took more time than it will now in the future for, like, the resolution now is more filling in spots rather than creating anything. So I think this was just that transition period in time I had to spend now. So it'll take less time in the future.
And I would, I can only surmise that some of the questions that the board was asking you regarding Shepherd apply to future applications too. So again, it's establishing baselines that we didn't have in the past.
Correct, correct.
So I make a motion to accept the EHA invoice for, uh, July. Um, sorry, I misspoke before. It's for July and the amount of ten thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have two extension resolutions. Uh, the first is for SH twenty-nine West Neck LLC and Robert Lipsite and Lois B. Morris. This is a continuing extension. Uh, they've, the applicant had their, uh, their Suffolk County Health Department Board of Review hearing back in April, April twentieth. And they are still waiting for a determination to be issued. And, um, so they are kind of stuck and it makes sense to work with them and extend the, um, application deadline or the, the deed submission deadline. This new, uh, extension will take them to October ninth. Currently would be, it's, uh, expiring on August twenty-fifth. Uh, so I make a motion to accept resolution number twenty of twenty twenty-three, which will, for the SH twenty-nine West Neck LLC. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The, um, second extension resolution has to deal with the Nelson White Estate. The, um, extension of their bond deadline. The, they have been putting in the short road off of Manantik Avenue, uh, into the subdivision. They haven't personally not done any additional work, uh, since May. But the town has gone in and done the clearing. They're responsible for putting in the parking area. And, uh, Karen Ho, the applicant's representative, did provide us with, um, a kind of a deadline of what is going on, uh, a timeframe of what the next steps were. And so I'm content with that. I was a little upset not seeing some progress. But Nathan Corwin's going to come in and stake the curbing that's needed and put in the, um, concrete monuments. And then Marcel Masonry is going to come in and, uh, by the end of August, put in the curbing that's needed. And then, um, Brazini is going to come in and put the, the, uh, finish coat down on the, on the ser- finished surface down. And, uh, Jason Bone of Sunburst Landscaping is going to be addressing the plant, new plantings, uh, the second week of September. And it makes more sense to do this later in the end year so that it's actually live instead of doing it now. Um, so the extension I'm content with. This will also take them from August twenty-fifth to October ninth.
I went down there today. Looks really nice. They, it's nice that we did the extra effort not to take the trees down.
Yeah, I'm glad they moved that. That was a worthy effort. So I make a motion to accept resolution number twenty-one of twenty twenty-three regarding the additional final approval for the subdivision of Nelson White Estate. Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have, um, three continued public hearings tonight. Uh, first is Weinstein Hensley. But that's application for twenty-eight South Berry, South Midway Road. Uh, we did read the public notice and, um, and discussed the CAC, um, about last week, I believe, last, last month. Um, so on that, I don't know. You're here representing the applicant. If you want to tell us a little bit about it.
Yes, sir. Matt Sherman with Sherman Engineering and Consulting. I'm here with Bob Weinstein, who's the property owner at, uh, twenty-eight South, uh, South Midway Road. If I could share my screen, I've got a quick presentation. I'm describing the project for you. Okay, this project, uh, this property is, um, on, uh, South Midway Road. Midway Road is to the east. Manantik Creek is to the west. It's, uh, just under one acre. Sea zone, nearshore overlay district. This is a surveyor from, uh, Minto Survey of the property. A little bit of a zoomed in area here, zoomed in picture where you've got, this is the main house, the existing house. Uh, it was built in, uh, the mid nineteen thirties, initial of that middle part of the house there. And then it had a couple of additions to the north and south. The, for the sea zone, you've got a ten-foot side yard setback to the north, thirty-foot front yard setback along Midway Road, and then another ten-foot side yard setback to the south. The, let me see here. Zoom in on it here. Okay. Uh, this is just a cleaned up version. The existing asphalt driveway, existing deck. This is the existing dwelling and then a small accessory building to the south. The accessory building doesn't have any conditioned living space, doesn't have any plumbing. There is a, uh, pre-existing set of stairs and a concrete platform and retaining walls right down here. And then the dock is currently under construction. That was recently improved. Actually, is it, is it construction done at this point? Yeah, construction is done at this point. Okay, the flagged wetlands line basically is just inboard of the property boundary, runs right down along here. That was flagged in August of twenty twenty-two. So here's our setbacks again. It's a little bit easier to see them on this drawing. And actually, I'm sorry, a second ago, I said a ten-foot, uh, setback to the south. It's actually Lesser Street is a street down there on the south side and there's a thirty-foot setback down there. These are the seventy-five-foot setbacks and hundred-foot setbacks off of the vegetated wetlands boundary. The existing septic system is right here between the house and the wetlands, uh, just under sixty feet from the wetlands boundary. The existing well is right up over here on the, on the roadside of that accessory building. So the septic, as I just mentioned, fifty-five feet from wetlands. The existing house at its closest point is sixty-one point eight feet from the wetlands boundary. This dark black line here is the New York State DEC jurisdictional boundary. On a property like this, the DEC has a few different things that they look at when they're determining jurisdiction for a title wetlands. Uh, everything within three hundred feet is where they start. And then they've got a couple of things that limit their jurisdiction. If you've got a bulkhead that was constructed prior to August of nineteen seventy-seven, that's one thing. Or a substantial man-made structure, something over a hundred feet in length, we don't have that on this site. The other thing they have is the ten-foot contour or the top of a bank bluff or something to that effect. That, um, in this case, it's the approximate fourteen-foot contour as shown on a very specific survey that was, the letter of non-jurisdiction was issued on. So that's what that drawing, that line is shown, is it's drawing out that fourteen-foot contour that the DEC determined to be the limits of their jurisdiction. So anything that happens on the landward side, as far as the DEC is concerned, they have no say in the matter. That's just a cleaned up version of the same thing. This is a little bit of an overlay. Um, you can toggle back and forth so you can see. This is the existing house, existing deck, existing driveway. The proposed house and deck are in the same spot as the existing house and deck. And I'll, I'll go into a, a little bit of a better, clearer presentation of that in just a second. So this is the proposed plan. As I just mentioned, the house and deck stay the same as far as the same footprint is concerned. We've got a ninety-nine square foot deck being proposed on the water side of the house. It's at fifty-seven point one feet from the wetlands boundary. We've got a, um, swimming pool and patio on the north side of the house. Both the swimming pool and the patio are more than a hundred feet from the wetlands boundary. So they're outside of the wetlands jurisdiction for the town. The, uh, uh, there's a, uh, stormwater pool and a swimming pool drywell being proposed right in this area here, just between the house and the pool. A new IA septic system on the landward side of the house, over a hundred feet from the wetlands boundary to replace that existing cesspool, which is fifty-five feet from the wetlands boundary. And on the far northern corner of the property, a new supply well, which will replace this supply well, which is down here by the, uh, by the accessory building. So when it comes looking at just the, the wetlands end of this project, we've got a number of different things happening. Again, it's all consistent with what is there now, uh, with the exception of that ninety-nine square foot deck. Um, we've got two hundred and ten square feet of the building to be renovated. Uh, the main part of the building right here to be renovated within the vegetated buffer. There's another fourteen feet of the building within the vegetated buffer here. Everything else is within the adjacent regulated area. So seventeen hundred and eighty-one square feet of the main building, three hundred and thirty-six square feet of the deck. Uh, the accessory building remains unchanged. This section of deck here, that ninety-nine square foot deck, we're asking for the town to recognize that one time up to one hundred square foot exemption for new construction to be used for that deck. Uh, one thing that's changed on this plan than on the plan that we had submitted for the, uh, wetlands permit application is this is the proposed pool fence. It comes in much closer to the swimming pool. That gets it outside of the DEC jurisdiction and also doesn't put any work out here in the middle of this, um, adjacent, uh, in, in the middle of this, uh, vegetated buffer area. Stormwater calculations for this project, we designed for a two-inch rainfall. Basically divided it into, into a, a couple of different sections. Uh, there's two different dry wells handling the stormwater. Um, so for a two-inch rainfall, we've got the northern half of the building going up to the first dry well. We've got the southern half of the building and the accessory building going down to the southern dry well. Uh, this is just a side-by-side comparison of before and after. Um, we're removing sixteen hundred and thirty square feet of asphalt driveway. Uh, square footage coverage of the house and desk stays the same. Square footage of the accessory building stays the same. We're going to be adding six hundred and eighty-seven square foot of impervious surface for the swimming pool. But the patio around the swimming pool are going to be paver set in sand. So that will be considered, uh, pervious as far as the town is concerned. That's another thousand ninety-one square feet, um, just to the, uh, roadside of the swimming pool. So existing coverage versus proposed coverage, as for impermeable coverages for existing, currently we're at eighteen percent. Proposed, we're going down to fourteen percent. It's basically removing that asphalt driveway is really the, what, what's helping us out there. Just a couple of quick, uh, renderings of the, uh, of the proposed construction. If you're familiar with the property, it's a very low, one-story ranch-style building. Um, we're basically going to be keeping it the same height, going to be keeping it the same width, uh, end to end. This dormer on the, um, top of the building is in addition, basically flipping from the way the existing building is to the way the proposed building. And here's a comparison. So this is the existing building. The, uh, road is on your left-hand side. The creek is on your right-hand side. The existing dormer is facing the creek. This is the proposed building, same elevation view. The proposed dormer will be facing the road. Um, and the, uh, this is an overlay showing in green. The proposed work as opposed to the existing work in blue. So you can see that the proposed building is basically falling, uh, for, for most intents and purposes, within the same overall envelope as the existing building. Uh, the four plan, just to kind of get, show you how the whole thing's laying out. The existing house is four bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms. This plan is going down to three bedrooms, so we're reducing a bedroom. And we're going to three bathrooms, so we're going to have three full bathrooms. So bedroom and bathroom here, bedroom and bathroom here, same thing there. This bathroom and it enters out into a foyer, living room, kitchen and, um, a deck area. The kitchen area is the section that I pointed out earlier, which is the screened porch that's being converted into, uh, living space. That's basically what's turning into that kitchen area. This deck here is that ninety-nine square foot addition that we're asking for, uh, on the water side of the, the, uh, of the building. And then this loft area here is that dormer that's going to be facing on the roadside. And that's over top of the foyer and this, uh, TV room slash family room area. So these are, are all, these are in your application package. They're just the, uh, architectural plans of the building. One of the main reasons why we're here for a wetlands permit is, excuse me, the building is on a crawl space for the most part. There's a couple of spots that are a little bit more than crawl space, but most of it's a crawl space. What we want to do is leave the existing outside foundation wall, come in between one foot and two foot from that existing wall and build a new foundation inside the existing so that we've got a full basement underneath this building. There's, uh, there will be a mechanical room, there will be laundry facilities, things like that inside the basement. There won't be any conditioned living space, um, no egress windows. So they can't put bedrooms or other types of usable space down there. But because we're doing work of, in that, that vein, inside the existing basement and that area is within the regulated area for the wetlands, that's what, uh, creates a need for a wetlands permit. Uh, this is the existing floor plan. Um, you've got, uh, the main bedroom, main living area. There's a garage right here. This is the, um, that screened room that's turning into the, uh, turning into the kitchen on the new plan. And then this is the second floor that's got that dormer facing out toward the water with the other bedrooms in it. More filming plans and the same, same, similar version of those building plans that I had shown you just a second ago. Uh, this is a new vegetation plan that we've done, um, in light of what you guys had asked for, for McCann. Um, I'm going to provide the board with, uh, full-size stamped copies of this. Um, but I wanted to, we wanted to get to this for the hearing so that at least we had something to show you that was along the lines of what the, um, what you were talking about for, for McCann and hopefully for most of these moving forward. This is not the most eligible copy just because of its size. But I just wanted to get to something so you could put your hands on it. You're welcome.
Can you send the video?
Yeah, I'm going to send you the video. Uh, so the, the landscape plan that we had provided in the application package was along the lines, kind of what Ian had mentioned earlier, of a, a more simplified version of what we were providing in previous wetlands permit applications. So again, in light of the previous, um, hearings and discussions of the board and wanting something a little bit more specific, you can go through this and I'm not going to go through it in detail, uh, at, at the hearing. But it basically lays out, you know, the numbers, the sizes, the spacing, um, of everything that we're wanting to propose on this, uh, on this site. Um, I'll show you some pictures in just a second of the site. There's existing, an existing, very healthy, very thick, very formidable, non-turf buffer at the waterfront of this property. Uh, the property owners want to continue that, so they want to extend it another ten feet or so. Weave new plantings into the existing ones that are there. Uh, the existing turf grass that's on site, I know the CAC had asked us to, uh, um, put in Zoysia as turf grass. What we'd like to do is just leave the existing grass as it is and let it slowly get overtaken by some of these other plantings that we're putting in. Rather than go in, take out the existing grass, put in Zoysia and, you know, basically, uh, you know, change glad to happy for all intents and purposes. Um, so and, and again, I'll get you guys a full-size stamped copy of this, uh, this vegetation plan. So some of the, the pictures of the site, I'm sure everyone's probably fairly, uh, fairly familiar with the site. Uh, this is from the north looking south. Uh, Midway Road would be to your left-hand side. Same location looking out toward the creek. This is the area where the swimming pool would be going. Um, the deck, if my pointer show up. Uh, there it is. The, uh, the deck is, uh, right there. It's going to be replaced as a ramp that's going down right now. That ramp is going to be replaced with level decking. But the, uh, the overall footprint of the deck will remain the same. Uh, looking down toward the water from where the swimming pool would be located. This is from the opposite side, so that ninety-nine square foot deck area would be right here in this area in front of that section of building. And then obviously the, uh, the water to your left-hand side. This is part of that existing vegetative buffer. Another, look at it from the south, looking, um, creek to your left-hand side. Same thing, look in the other direction, creek to your right-hand side. Uh, this is that concrete area that's leading out toward where the dock is now. Um, at a, a well-vegetated bank to the, um, that would be to the north of that, uh, that area. And then there it is, looking the other direction from that same spot. So that's what I have as far as the presentation. If the board has any questions for me or for the, uh, for the property owner, you can do a happy answer to it.
I actually do, Matt. Sorry.
Just to drop the share if you don't.
Who, who do you trip the landscape plan to? Who did that?
Uh, one of, um, I worked with, um, you know, unless I come up.
Good luck.
Here, give yourself. Uh, Bob Weinstein, twenty-eight South Midway. Um, I worked with, uh, John Vertivere on the plan, but I illustrated myself just to, you know, get a little more specific.
Oh, it's great.
Thank you.
Well, I'm first, first looking at it. It's very nice.
Thank you. I'm not so sure I'm going to do it again. It's a favor of love for my own property.
Um, a couple of questions from Matt, if I may.
Sure, sure.
One in the denial letter, and this just may be Reed's, um, writing. He wrote, "Your new foundation expanding the basement downward within the VB, vegetative buffer, therefore requires approval by the town board." Was this just not sent to us and it really is just, because the next statement's, "Your new foundation expanding the basement downward with the, uh, the adjacent vegetative buffer requires a wetlands permit."
Yeah, I think that was just old habits die hard. So.
Okay, so it's, it's really just been a moot point.
I, I can confirm that with Reed, but, but that's what I suspect.
Um, I commend you on what you're doing with the foundation, not ripping the existing out. Are you sure that the existing is in valid enough condition that you, since it goes back to thirty-eight, uh, that it doesn't have to come out? Has someone, an engineer, someone looked at it?
We worked with John Crowden.
Okay.
And, uh, Dave Bartolucci, who's the contractor we're working with, spent more time than any human being should spend down there. So he really had a good look around it too.
And John had quick prepared that foundation detail that I'd shown on the plans that we submitted as part of the application package. That was from Crowden.
Great. I've seen that, uh, done before. One thing you may want to consider is actually removing a section of foundation against the street so that you could drive a skid steer down in there or wheelbarrows. Right now it's showing walls all the way around with no internal access. That means everything would have to come up.
No, yeah, the plan is to basically ramp. Yeah, the plan is to basically ramp it up from the roadside.
You don't show any parking or material staging, and that would be helpful if that you do describe it briefly on the south corner and north corner, but if we have a quick sketch.
Yeah, I can. I've got it on one of my drawings, but I can put it a little more detail. You know, the area where the septic is going to be installed, basically along the whole road frontage, from the accessory building of where the new well is going, that whole area is going to be for parking and storage, but I can give you more detail on that.
Just want to make sure we don't block one fourteen, South Midway. It's quite active, especially in that side with all those other houses that don't really have ample room to pull vehicles off off the road.
Yeah, no, not a problem at all.
Probably would love to see where the driveway's going in, construction entry, so that basically putting in the washed stone subbase to the future parking area up front so trades can park on it and not get stuck in mud, but likewise not track mud all over the road. Otherwise, I think this is fairly straightforward. Do you guys have any other questions?
No, I agree with you on the road because I actually run that road a lot, and it's very dangerous. It's a pedestrian open.
At the point fingers, but there's two or three houses further south of South Midway that cause problems. Right on the corner, too. So if you if you don't mind just submitting the plan, close this hearing. Oh, sorry. Is anyone in the audience would like to speak about this application? Anyone on Zoom would like to speak about this application? So I'd like to close this all but for the one requested drawing, and Matt, could you get that to us in, say, a week?
Yeah, it's not a problem.
That sound right with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Anything after you follow this or?
So are you you're?
Keeping it open for the submission of the?
Map only?
Map only. For one week. The next public hearing is for a continuation of the Carpe wetlands application for nine eight Saconic Avenue. And I believe Quinn is here to walk us through the new site plan.
Yes, I can. You have Quinn Carpe here, along with my father, Martin, is also on the line. So there were a few questions, Ian, that that you had had. Was there any place that you wanted to start, or shall I just come?
Let me summarize then quickly what we've received for for everyone here. We've received a new application site plan that basically has no expansion at all. The the front door stoop has been internalized, the patio off the great room has been abandoned, and the side yard stoop, which was the most recent item we were questioning, is to remain in its current location. Having said so, Reed, Karen, who wrote the denial letter, the senior building inspector, and in the denial letter questioning the age of the fire pit patio, has come back with a correspondence today where he identifies that the fire pit patio pre-existed the wetlands code, which would allow you to use your one-time one-hundred-square-foot total exemption going forward. That is really not of our concern. That would be done when you file the with the building application, and he would then allow you to do that one one-hundred-foot square foot expansion, but it doesn't affect our application. So as far as I'm concerned, the this application is a good thing. Are you still removing the asphalt driveway and putting in crushed stone?
We are, yes.
Yeah. You put in a new IA sanitary system and got rid of the existing cesspool, and you've not further expanded any parts, so I think this is a real win. And with this latest email from Reed gives you some minor flexibility to that side yard stoop going forward.
And and this this these plans also include the the new dry wells. I know that was a point of concern.
And the dry well, yeah, thank you for that, which which the property did not have before. So that's a third very strong mitigating feature. You also provided a landscape plan with some.
Updated count for the.
Put together by Christian Clark with a specific count on materials installation tools, so all very good. Do you, anyone on the plane board have any questions about this?
I think I'm good with it, so.
No, I'm happy with the second, the updated version, much better.
Okay. Anyone in the audience? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, so I'm going to close this public hearing.
You need a motion to meet.
Oh, do I make a motion to close the public hearing? On favor?
Second.
Second.
Oh, second. You needed.
Thank you, Quinn.
Thank you.
Okay, so the last continued public hearing is for seven Chequid Avenue, L C. I'm the applicant's architect and must excuse myself.
Okay, so here we are again. Let's, public discussion is open for seven Chequid Avenue. Would anyone like to speak?
I'll start out real quick. Matt Sherman, Sherman Engineering, on behalf of the applicant. My understanding from the last hearing was that the one outstanding question had to do with the secret classification of this project. I don't know if the board had come to a determination on that, whether it was a type one or type two action. I think pending that discussion and whatever the board feels is the appropriate path forward on that, we don't really have anything else to ask. Unless, of course, throughout tonight's conversation, you guys have questions for me. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, John Evans, I'll be brief, because I've had several sessions of this, but I submit that the opposition submitted is overwhelming and logical to this project. If an architect whose name was anything other than the name McDonald, I think it would be rejected. And the only question is, and I'm sure you have the greatest respect and admiration for for your chairman, and maybe rightly so, but given all the opposition to this, the question is, do you have, I don't say the fortitude, but do you have the ability to do the right thing based on all the evidence? Even though you greatly admire your chairman, but it's difficult and it's difficult to to turn him down knowing that he's the architect of this for this project. So just if you look at all the evidence and all the opposition submitted, it's overwhelming and logical.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, Flores?
Hi, do you mean I'm Lori Beard-Raidman. I'm here representing the Chongran Heights Property Owners Corporation. And I'd like to reiterate a few things from from our previous hearings. And I'd like to start with the that this FEMA, to remind you that this project is in a FEMA flood zone, which is a high-risk area that has been dating with floodwaters. The town adopted chapter sixty as a local law pursuant to the municipal home rule law and the state environmental quality review act, which we discussed last time. I would reiterate that this project is not a type two due to it being a flood hazard area and what's proposed in terms of contraction. The applicant submitted, application submitted does not include a full assessment form as required by this section of the code, and I'd like to quote the section of the code, which is sixty dash twelve, type one action. For the purpose of this chapter, town one actions include all given, all those given in section twelve, art six one seven of the New York Code Rules Regulation. In addition to above, the following actions shall be a type one action in the town of Shelter Island. And number four of sixty dash twelve says projects which will introduce or make possible new homes or other facilities for human occupation or habitation in a flood zone area of the town, which this structure certainly is intended for habitation. Sixty dash eight, when an agency, department, board, or approving or officer of the town of Shelter Island contemplates directly carrying this out, funding, or approving a type one action, a full environmental assessment must be prepared by it or on its behalf. This is far, so far only a short EAF submitted by the applicant. I also want to talk about the Heights Historical District. We touched on this in one of the previous hearings that, and one of the and the applicant was asked if a if a SHPO were reviewed. SHPO is the State Historic Preservation Office, and I want to talk about that process and what that means. The Heights, as you know, is a New York State Historic District, as well as the NAP is on the National Register of Historic Places. So when an application is submitted to the DEC, the DEC will look at it. If it's a non-jurisdiction, which this project is, the process means that it wouldn't automatically go to SHPO for review. When a DEC permit is required, which this project is not, then it automatically sends it to SHPO for review. So in this case, it didn't go to SHPO because it's got a New York State DEC non-jurisdiction letter. So it likewise, the other automatic mechanism to send a project to SHPO is if there are, if the project was funded by grant monies, which of course this project is not, so that wouldn't apply either. However, the authority having jurisdiction in this case is the town of Shelter Island, and they can send that to SHPO for the review and approval. And considering that this is a New York State and a national recognition, recognition in an historic district of historic places, I think it would be the prudent thing to do. And it's the town that makes that application, not the DEC. So for the DEC to say that it wasn't, it wasn't required, the DEC doesn't require it because it's a non-jurisdiction under their envelope, but that has nothing to do with that whether a review should be done or can be done. Because it's the town, it then falls on the town to make that review and make that recommendation to the State Historic Office. I want to tie that into the comprehensive plan, once again, in chapter three of natural resources of the adopted plan. I'm not talking about the new one everyone's looking at now. I'm talking about the adopted plan, which goes back to the nineteen ninety-four plan. In the portion of natural natural resources, the portion of that implementation, action number three says, and then the zoning ordinance, to provide special controls in areas of shallow groundwater to enforce maximum feasibility, recharge, and reducing residential density. Example, limiting accessory dwellings and affected areas. That's a direct quote from the adopted comprehensive plan. The exact opposite is being proposed here, and there are no other residential accessory living structures on Chequid Avenue. If this would have, if it was approved, it would be the first one. So to me, it's in contradiction of the comprehensive plan. And, you know, chapter four also talks about the goals and objectives, and we talked about this before in terms of the protection of the island's small-town community, way of life, the rural character, natural resources, and supporting all those qualities. That's also in chapter four, and our cultural resources. And this project, in terms of its size, is going to be affected by the scenic view, not only from Chequid Avenue, but from the approaching ferry. We talked about this last time as well. And then quote again, on the adopted plan, it says, "This requires continued matching of views of the land's natural and visual qualities and the protection of the critical visual assets, including scenic views and roads and cultural viewpoints." The exact words coming out of the comprehensive plan. The size of this proposed accessory structure, we feel, has a negative impact on both of scenic views, as I mentioned, and and the character of the neighborhood. Moving on, in addition, on the two previous hearings of both June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, a few comments were made that I'd like to address. On June thirteenth hearing, the applicant indicated no de-watering would be required. However, in the meeting on June eleventh, the applicant provided a couple of detailed sketches, which appeared that the groundwater is four feet, eight inches. We asked for water table information in June to confirm that no de-watering was required, but according to the sketches provided in the June eleventh hearing, it appears that de-watering may be required for pilings. The drawings that have been submitted say, "See engineers' drawings for pile structure." This is not happening. At the end of the last hearing, the applicant was asked and answered that, you know, a test hole for water had been done, and he would provide a water table. That was discussed in the last hearing. I haven't seen one. I didn't see one posted on your website. I don't know if you've received it, but that information has not been provided to date. I would note that the applicant is also working with the owner across the street on an existing structure, which is now before the EVA. It hasn't come to you yet. It will be coming to you next. In that project, it's an existing house that they're raising on pilings in a very similar nature. That is a FEMA flood zone. The majority of the project is in the eighth, eighth with a small section in the DPA, but the whole house of the whole structure is being raised on pilings. That project has a different architect. On those documents, they have given details, including a water cable, and on those drawings, it says there is going to be de-watering. So we're just trying to understand how two projects with the same pilings, same flood zone, both being raised to be above the flood plain, how one project is saying there's no de-watering required, and the other project is saying there is, by two different design professionals. But without the test hole data or the soil sampling, there's for this project, there's no way to confirm that. And I just don't think that enough detail and documentation has been provided. So I'm just questioning that because it's hard to understand how these two projects, which are very similar, have different information. Grading changes have been taken and closed, and a sketch was provided for that as well. However, no data or analysis has been submitted to show that that grading that is proposed will not redirect floodwaters to the existing structure on the property or the adjacent properties or the adjoining neighbors or Chequid Avenue. Three dry wells have been shown for collection of stormwater runoff, but no calculations or data have been submitted to show that this is sufficient. It was just, it was just submitted on a previous application. We heard tonight that on this project, there's been no data at all provided. So, you know, we recommend an environmental evaluation be done by an environmental So, you know, we recommend an environmental evaluation be done by an environmental consultant, which is what the town board said would be done as a benefit by changing the wetland application review from the town board to the planning board. This is a perfect example of a project that an environmental consultant should be. This is, moving on again, this is the next, this is the third time we've requested this application be referred to the zoning board for decisions that the planning board does not have the authority to review issues outside of Chapter 129, which the planning board acknowledged the last hearing. Chapter 133, 32F, the Town Code states interpretations, the zoning board of appeals may interpret the meaning of number one, any provision of Chapter 133 upon the referral by the building inspector, zoning officer, or the planning board. So the planning board has that authority to refer anything that they feel should be questioned or interpreted under Chapter 133. The drawings show a room approximately 230 square feet with a refrigerator, a dishwasher, sink, an island of seating, a pantry, and cabinetry, which is labeled a kitchen or a kitchenette throughout the drawings. 133, 6E3A clearly states that no accessory sleeping quarter shall have kitchen facilities. As labeled in the drawings, the kitchen would then make this project an accessory apartment under the Town Code. 133, 17A1G clearly states, no accessory apartment may be constructed in the nearshore overlay district, which is where this project is located. The drawings also clearly show a new accessory structure within 100 feet of the town wetlands. 133, 12F3 clearly states, a building and structure shall be located at least 100 feet landward edge of the tidal or freshwater wetlands. CAC met and reviewed this project on May 8, 2023. They even, they, even they considered this proposed structure an accessory apartment, requested a test hole in the area of construction, said that no de-watering should be allowed for any construction, and even wanted proof of the federal flood zone status due to the discrepancies of different flood zones that were mentioned on the drawings. Committee voted to deny this application in the nearshore overlay unanimously six to zero. What weight is being given in the CAC's unanimous decision? What weight is being given in the seven surrounding neighbors, which so many have opposed to the project for good reasons? I just throw those questions out there, I'm not expecting you to answer them, but, you know, there's been so much opposition, I'm just wondering what that's going to take on your decision, I think. We sent a FOIL request to the town on August 4, asking for copies of any plans, letters, memos, emails, or documents sent to the town board on or after July 11 of 2023, of which we were told town clerk had received and forwarded on to the committee clerks. A partial reply, and I emphasize partial, was received this morning. We were surprised to see correspondence to and from the applicant and the building department and the planning board and Christina Martin that was not included in the planning board's correspondent list on today's agenda. So, you know, I understand that internal emails may go back and forth, but what I don't understand is why the applicant was copied on some of those emails that, that would make that public correspondence. And some of the correspondence we received in the FOIL and the emails went back and forth, there was, there's discussion regarding the existing irrigation system. The applicant had alluded in those emails that went back and forth that perhaps the cause of the excessive water use, which we discussed, use on this property was due to irrigation. You're not questioning how the water is being used, you're questioning how much water is being used. Water used is water used. Residential customer, this residential customer is among POCS' largest residential consumers of water out of 175 residents. An excessively large accessory structure with a room labeled as a kitchen in the nearshore overlay district with three rooms that could be used as bedrooms, two and a half indoor bathrooms, one outdoor shower will definitely increase the water use for even on larger water demand. In closing, I'm restating the Heights position from the last two hearings. Exceptions to the Town Code should only be approved when there is a hardship or no practical alternatives, which is not the case here. A smaller structure could be built outside of the town wetlands. We would prefer that no additional structure be placed in this location, as we discussed for the historical reasons, based on the comments that we read, that I read on the Comprehensive Plan. But should the applicant persist, we, we hope the town requires a full environmental assessment by an environmental consultant in the property or to take the Heights advice and build a more modest, one-level structure entirely outside of the town wetlands that is actually subordinate or incidental to the principal structure, as indicated in the term accessory structure. Smaller structure would reduce the density in the nearshore overlay district, it would use less water, and it'd be better aligned with the character of the neighborhood and therefore hopefully reduce water using. In addition, we have asked in the past two hearings or letters for details such as landscaping plans, irrigation plans, test hole data, on which we've not received, all of which are important pieces to the information for the project in an environmentally sensitive area to help get a resolution that is appropriate. If the planning board decides to grant this planning board permit, Shelter Island Heights Property Owners Corporation will propose those additional conditions to be considered in the inclusion on the final resolution, some of which we have put in our letters. So those are the additional comments we have. I know a lot of them were reiterations of two previous hearings, but there's a lot of things that have been discussed and a lot of letters and emails and memos that went back, and I just wanted to recap all of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Emily Miller, we're at 16 Central, and I don't have a whole lot to add to what's been said tonight. We, I did attend the meeting and we submitted a letter at that time that I can't read again today, but I would just again say that the environmental reasons, the historical reasons of Shelter Island Heights and the visual changes that will be, that will affect the views from outside as well as the neighbors around, including, including us, is just a little set of precedent going forward, and it just feels very sad to all of us nearby. And I hope also, what Lori said at the end, perhaps they can try to reduce the size or change it to some extent to a, to a level that would be more acceptable to everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Richard Myers, spoken for on the honor of Chiquit Avenue next door to San Chiquit, with my wife Grace. Thank you for spending even more time on this issue, which clearly many of us feel is quite serious. And I think as Emily and Lori have stated, many of us around the neighborhood, most of us even, are on the exact same page, and while some are more outspoken and comfortable getting up in front of you than others, you know, I am on behalf of, I am here on behalf of several neighbors who wish to remain anonymous and have similar views. A lot or most of which is detailed in various letters, but I just want to make clear that you shouldn't interpret other neighbors' absence as anything but shyness or awkwardness. It's, it's, as Emily said, it's a situation to go up here against a neighbor who we all respect and like, and, you know, this is, this is an issue for a government body and involves some serious interpretive issues around very serious Town Code and environmental issues that, as I've said before, are truly boundary-setting in their nature. Whether, whether you're an elected body or not, I would ask whether, you know, you're the right jurisdictional group to be making those interpretations. I don't know the answer to that question, but as a citizen of this country and state, we rely on this process to, you know, to provide protections under the law. And that's why we're here, to clarify whether this is truly legal as proposed or not, and have all the respect for the applicant and their professional service providers. Those service providers are commercial in nature. You'll have to take a board of people's appointment to sift through that and, you know, make a real interpretation of what's allowed and what's not allowed. So I can totally understand why an applicant may rely on what, you know, an architect or an engineer says is permissible and straightforward, but we at least need a sounding board and a FOIL to that interpretation, and, you know, out of my own pocket, I've sought that. Kimberly is on the line here, we've spoken to others as well, and there is no doubt that this is not a straightforward issue. This is a very serious boundary-setting interpretive issue that all of us on Chiquit Avenue, you know, every property facing the same waterfront that the Shepherds face, you know, ten, four, five houses have written in opposition. And those on similar waterfronts throughout the island, whether they know it or not, will face the consequences of this decision. So we're not against building. To be clear, we are okay with building in, in a reasonable way where, you know, form is not put ahead of function, and, but is a three-bedroom house that is meant to house a single family, as has been clearly stated on the record, it's meant to house a family unit. That is not an accessory structure. You know, how that can be interpreted otherwise, relying on orally written, ambiguous, and indirectly cited portions of the Town Code, you can piece together an argument for why it may be, but we all know, you know, when we see it, that inform, this is one thing, in function, it's completely different. So I would question if it really is meant to temporarily house for several weeks in the summer extended family, then aren't there more reasonable-sized structures that are truly subordinate and accessory in nature that could be accommodated with neighbors' concerns and property owners' associations' concerns going away? I would imagine there are. Alternatively, if it's meant to house a family for a larger portion of the year, I think as Lori and Kimberly will opine, it's directly conflicting with the Town Code and the ability to build in this, in this zone, a new structure meant to house a standalone family. So, once again, I appreciate your time, sorry this has taken so long. It's incredibly awkward and sad to be, you know, disputing a neighbor with good intentions, but I feel like professionals and experts in their field need to sort this out, whether that's with this board or beyond. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to speak on behalf of my clients, whom you just heard from.
Okay.
John Evans, Grace Evans, and Rich Myers.
You identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Kimberly Ray, Westervelt and Ray, and I represent John Evans, Rich Myers, and Grace Evans, who've just spoken. This afternoon, I emailed to each of you a set of comments that I had prepared. I had said at the last meeting that I wanted to submit written comments, and you kept the public hearing open for that, and this evening was the deadline for that. So, so I just want to be sure that you have those comments. Did everyone get those?
Yes.
We got them just before the meeting, though.
They were sent before debating, yeah.
Right, right. So my preference would be not to have to go through them, but if you haven't seen them, and you're going to vote tonight, I need to do that. I presume you're not going to vote, however, because we, you've never received a vegetation plan, correct?
We're not voting, we're not, I would not recommend you vote tonight.
Okay, we're not voting.
Okay.
And we weren't.
Okay, so what, what, sorry. So while we're on that topic, when is the vegetation plan coming? It's been requested three times, and I don't, the applicant keeps talking about what she's thinking about, but we, to my knowledge, we haven't received a vegetation plan. So is that going to be submitted? It is required by this board?
We had a simplified version of a vegetation plan was submitted with the initial application, and we will provide the board with a, with a more in-depth vegetation plan, similar to like we discussed at the previous hearing, something more along the lines of what the board is currently looking for as opposed to what the town was looking for when this application was first submitted. So we will be submitting that to the board.
Thank you. Thank you. I have another question about, about hydraulic analysis and groundwater data and evaluations that I think are required to be sure that there's not going to be, there's not going to be adverse impacts to the wetlands, the coastal floodplain, and this property, which is in the nearshore peninsula overlay district. I just don't see that very much has been done. I noticed in the, the first application tonight that stormwater runoff calculations had been submitted. Are those going to be, are those going to be submitted for this project?
Before we continue this for a while, if the board would like me to stand up here and have a conversation with Kimberly during the hearing, I can do that. If you'd like me to answer questions one at a time, or just make a list when we're done, and then respond in one fell swoop, we can do that, whatever the board feels is going to be more appropriate.
I think it's a better use of time if you can just jot down her questions and surprise at the end.
Okay.
All right. Well, and some of these, some of these remarks are contained in my, in my comments. I made them before, but I'd like to say again that there just has not been any adequate technical analysis done out there. I don't know how you can possibly think that you can rule out adverse effects from this project. There's been no, nothing to tell us that there's not going to have to be de-watering. I realize that, and no one wants to have de-watering, but this property is very low-lying, and we haven't received anything, no technical report whatsoever that would indicate that that's the case. We don't have, we just, we don't even have groundwater data. You know, we, there's been no geodetic survey done that you have every right to ask for. There's just no technical information on this property, and I, so I'd just like to urge the board to require that of the applicant. I'd also like to go back to the secret issue that's been raised before, but my comments focus on the fact that That's been raised before, but my comments focus on the fact that the town board in 1984 amended its seeker law. And as Lori Beard-Raymond pointed out, not only adopted state seeker standards and guidelines, but also added a new one of its own, which municipalities are permitted to do. That was to look at properties in, or rather, look at proposed buildings within the coastal floodplain and require that certain of them receive a more rigorous environmental review. And one of those categories was this. It was, it was projects which make available residential dwellings within the coastal plain. Very specific, it's right in the statute, and it categorizes, or rather, sorry, classifies those projects of which this one is as type two, sorry, type one actions under seeker that require a full environmental review based on a full environmental assessment form and supporting information. It requires not only just the review, but also completing the FEAF, the Full Environmental Assessment Form, and coming to and deriving from that review, a statement of findings, a determination of significance. And that, as my, as my comments point out, requires you then to send to the environmental notice bulletin, which is DEC's monthly, sorry, excuse me, weekly publication that provides all of these determinations across the state, so that the public is aware. I don't, just don't understand this cleaving to the idea that this is a type-two action because of the fact that the town board enacted its own version of seeker and required that projects just like this be analyzed rigorously under the provisions of secret. So perhaps I can't ask you why, but I've never, I've just never heard of any reason from anybody. I haven't heard this from council. I haven't heard it from anyone. Why it is that this board thinks that that provision of the town board does not apply to make this a type-one action? It just does. I do seeker all over the state. I have done it all over, all over the country, or with the various state corollaries. And this is very clear. It just, it's completely clear. And I, I'm concerned because it seems to me that there's been a policy decision made somewhere. I don't know if it was with you or who made it, maybe in town administration, that every one of these applications, wetlands applications, were going to be treated as seeker type-two that required no environmental review. There is a distinctly assembly-line feel to the presentation of these applications. Sort of run through them, check, check, check. And in fact, I guess I didn't focus on the template resolution that has been developed, but I would like to have a copy of that. I certainly hope that it covers all of the environmental vulnerabilities of this property in particular, but properties all over the island. The neighbors are in the same boat as Ms. Shepherd and her family. They're all in this very, very sensitive FEMA special flood hazard zone. They're all, this is, this is the nearshore overlay district, which really emphasizes more than anything else the need to limit density, which this project doesn't do. And in fact, it does the opposite, it increases it. So I would like, I'd like to, perhaps your council can review these comments, these, the legal aspects of this, because I, I understand that this board is following council's advice. I will also say, though, that this automatic classifying of these as type-two is improper. It does not follow secret protocols at all. And I think the town needs to really review that procedure and ensure in the future that it is done according to not only the town's environmental review law, but also the state's. As far as I know, the announcement of the classification is made on the notice that goes out, that's published, which tells me that you haven't seen it in advance, that you don't know what the classification is going to be. Although, perhaps it is that, again, this is a policy decision that's been made by the town, but if it is a policy decision for this property and several others, it's the wrong decision. It's against the law. So I do hope that you will revisit that. I think it's really important that you do, because as pointed out in my comments, this isn't just a wetlands permit. I know this has been said, but it is not. These are wetlands that exist in the FEMA special flood hazard area, very dynamic area that requires extreme care and caution in erecting structures there. It's in the nearshore and peninsula overlay, which again, by statute, the town's own purpose is to limit development to protect these extremely fragile areas. And I don't think that's being done. I think, I think that these other environmental conditions have been ignored. I hope, I hope you're not ignoring them. I urge you not to, because you cannot consider this wetlands application in a vacuum. You can't just run it along the assembly line. It's not a mill here. You have to consider environmental implications of this. You also have to consider the neighbors, because as I said, there's been a significant amount of objection from the neighbors who are knowledgeable. They live, they live right there. Their properties are in the same zones, and they're worried. They, they are very worried. And I have, again, have seen no technical analysis that would serve to rule out their fears. I don't think anyone can tell my clients or any of the other commentators that they don't have to worry about this giant building, which is being built in the regulated area in the floodplain, is not going to cause damage to it, the applicant's own property and theirs. That just, that hasn't been evaluated, and it really, it must be. We keep going back to the size of the building, which is really, really, really large. It's the size, it is larger than the average single-family dwelling on Shelter Island. Most importantly, it's a, it's a, it's a standalone house. It's not really accessory to the main dwelling, other than that the applicant wants this house to be for her children's families in the summer, part of the summer, I think. I don't know about the rest of the year, but it certainly will comfortably house two families. There's no question about that. And much has been said about the kitchen. Much has been said about the den office, which is really just masquerade, that's the masquerade for a third bedroom, which it could be. The code, of course, prohibits that. And I don't want to get into a big argument about kitchens, but it is, it is obvious that people are going to be preparing food in there. There are, there are dining tables in two rooms. In the great room, there's a large one, and then there's an eat-in bar that seats four, I believe, in the kitchen. The kitchen has a full pantry, a sink, dishwasher. It's, it's going to be a really beautifully equipped kitchen, as far as I can tell. But that's, that's prohibited in an accessory sleeping quarters. The code is very clear on this. The citations to these code provisions are in my comments, so I ask you to read them. They've been covered in the past, and Lori Beard-Raymond cited some of them, but I just think you're really straying from the town code, the provisions of the town code itself. I don't see any consideration for an attempt to preserve the, the environmental fragility of this area, or even an acknowledgement that it's fragile. I, I don't, I'm not getting that from it. This just seems to be just a, just a wetlands application, and it just isn't. So I hope that you will, I hope that you will consider that and consider that in the framework of the other, these vital environmental conditions that exist in the property. I think that all the neighbors, every one of them has said that, you know, they view this as being a potential, potentially damaging and terrible precedent that will be set of basically ignoring these environmental conditions and rubber-stamping a wetlands permit. I think they're right, because I think anyone else can, can come in with a wetlands application. And the might, the next one might be a 4,000-square-foot accessory dwelling, accessory sleeping quarters. And I just ask you to consider, what would you do then? What, what do you do? Where does this stop? The code is very clear. You cannot have two single-family homes on one lot. We all know that. Everyone knows that. And that's why this, this application has been dressed up as an accessory sleeping quarters, when any reasonable person who looks at this will know that it's a house, a house that's not permitted in light of the house that is already there. It's a standalone house that's virtually the same size as the primary dwelling. Let me talk about the primary dwelling a little bit. In our comments, we go through the actual square footage and the encroachments. They're really quite severe, and I ask, I urge you to read that, because, first of all, the applicant's lot is a pre-existing non-conforming use. It's a substandard lot, because it's 38,433 square feet, rather than the 40,000 square feet that the district bulk regulations require for minimum lot sizes. So it's already small. It was built, the front of it was also built completely in the, in the wetland-regulated area, completely. There's barely a five-foot setback on one side, and the plan now is to jam this single-family house up against my client's property line, which will ensure that the historic views that they and everyone else passing by in the Heights, in the Heights Historical District, have enjoyed for many, many years. That's not, this application doesn't warrant that. It, it's, this is really a distortion of, of the law, and I urge you to consider the realities of this. I realize that the notice of disapproval from the building department called an accessory structure, but there are times when the building inspector doesn't get it right. Not every time. They, they do a wonderful job, they, they do. I rely upon them, as we all do, for much guidance, but just because the notice of disapproval doesn't call out, for example, the FEMA coastal floodplain and the flood hazard area, and doesn't call out the fact that it's in the nearshore and peninsula overlay zone, doesn't mean that you don't have to consider it. In fact, your discretion requires you to consider these things. It's before you, and you know about it. I think you know anyway, because you live here, but there certainly has been a great deal of commentary drawing your attention to these things. So, so I hope that you'll consider that. I'd like to talk about the Shelter Island Heights Historic District. My comments address that. I addressed it last meeting, at the last meeting. And in fact, it's, it's discussed in some detail in my written comments. As promised at the last meeting, last hearing, I have included the National Park Service registry listing for the Shelter Island Heights Historic District. It contains listing, my client's listings of their homes, which are contributing, their historic homes. Seven Chiquit is not contributing, so it's not part of the district. But you have the potential, this proposal is to build a very, very large, single-family house, extremely close to a residence that is listed. It's a historical house, and part of its property value and part of its attraction to not only my clients, but to all of the neighbors who have these historic homes, is to maintain them so that the original intent of the nominating committee that put together, that nominated the historic district for inclusion in the National Register are protected. This building is, would constitute an adverse effect on this national place of great importance, one that the, that the State Historical Preservation Office has likewise listed and classified as a place of cultural and historic importance. And we do need review by those bodies. So I realize that at this point, you are determining that no secret review is required. Our position is that it is, and in fact, it must be conducted as coordinated review with not only SHPO, not only the National Park Service, also FEMA, and also the other regulatory agencies that have jurisdiction over this property. I realize that's probably unpalatable and not what you want to hear, but it's the law. And it, in order to remain within the bounds of the law and discharge your duty to adequately review this project, you have to do it. So I'd ask you to please review with an open mind my comments along these lines. I'm not going, since you're not going to vote tonight, I'm not going to get into all of the other topics raised in my comments, but I ask you to consider them, and I ask you also to require the applicant to provide you with some technical analysis of why the building of this house in this wetland-regulated area, in the FEMA-regulated flood zone, in the nearshore and peninsula overlay, won't damage the environment, my clients, and the That, that really is, that really is an evaluation that you must undertake. Again, I'd like to request a copy of the template resolution. I can do that, I can do that in writing. I'll be glad to do that. And I thank you very much for your time this evening, listening to us, and I hope that you will keep an open mind about this.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? For anyone else in Zooland?
Stella Gudis, and I'm representing-
Stella Gudis, and I'm representing the Shelter Island Heights Property Office Corps. There, I guess the one thing I keep coming back to, um, and when we talk to our board members and we talk to our property and roads committee members and the architects review committee members, question that we probably get the most has to do with hardship. And why must this structure be encroaching into the wetlands? And, you know, hardship means there's a difficulty, an obstacle, adversity, hardness, discomfort, I mean, something. If you go back to the first hearing, what we heard was that the applicant wanted to gather their family, which is wonderful. The family would be coming for maybe four to six weeks and they needed more room. Great, but you don't need to go into the wetlands. One of the other comments made by the applicant had to do with the desire to have a porch. Heights loves porches, but why does that porch need to go into the wetlands? There's so many people at committees like the CAC that have come before you to say, please don't allow this. I think one of the most interesting things that, that we talk about internally in the Heights is why hasn't the applicant, with all this feedback, just changed the proposal to stay out of the wetlands? Not, don't build. There was a thought, one, one neighbor who was supportive said, just please make it one level. The answer to that was, then it's going to look like a pool house. Well, okay. Um, so at the end of the day, I think one way to short circuit this whole discussion would be make it smaller, make it lower, stay out of the wetlands, and then you wouldn't need to be here. But I bring you back to my opening, which is where's the hardship? So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Oh, did you come up here, please?
My name is, is Robert Lowry. I'm a Heights resident. And I've been coming here since the nineties. I, I oppose this structure because it's built, it's going to be built or is planned to be built on the edge of the road. And it's going to be too tall and too big. And it reminds me of what I saw when I lived in New Jersey, on the Jersey Shore. And I don't think that's what we want here. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Did you want to say anything?
Um, I don't want to go through, I mean, there's a whole lot to unpack there. I don't want to go through all of the individual comments or questions unless the board has something specific they would like to ask me. Um, I did say that I would respond to some of Kimberly's, um, comments. Only a few of them are really, I think, directed toward me. Uh, one of the things that, that Lori had mentioned as well, she compared this project to the project across the street. One had, the original design was for pilings here at Shepherd. You don't de-water for pilings. The one across the street, the original design was for piers. You do water for piers. There is a difference between how you're supporting these buildings. The groundwater data has been brought up a couple of times on the, the wetlands permit application form. Questions numbers five and six. Depth to groundwater, approximately five feet. You got that information from test sporeings done on site. Elevation was at six feet. Groundwater is at about one foot. Approximate depth of groundwater, as noted in the application forms, was approximately five feet. Same thing with the, um, uh, the soil conditions there, predominantly sandy soils. It's in the application form. I will provide the two test hole data that we had done, which were in the area of the proposed, uh, proposed building construction. We'll provide that to the board so that you've got it. Secret determination, that's obviously a question for you guys, not for me. The, if the board would like to see some other kind, kind of evaluation of stormwater impact for the minimal amount of regrading and earthwork that's going to be done on site. We went over it at the last hearing. We can give you something a little bit more, with a little more meat to it, a little more, um, narrative, if you will. If the board would like to see that, just let me know. I'd be happy to provide that kind of information. Again, there's a lot more information, a lot more, uh, questions and comments that people had come up with. We weren't happy to answer anything either tonight or in, in writing as a follow-up to the, to the hearing tonight.
All right, thank you, Matt. Oh, the landscape?
Landscape?
The landscape plan, yeah.
Yeah, we'll bring, we'll give you a, a landscape plan along the ideas of the other ones.
I require that now, so.
Okay.
And could I, could I just make one clarification about this? I, I have complained pretty much continuously about the lack of technical information. And by that, I'm not criticizing Matt at all. I mean, look at what he submitted for the Heasley, the, the other, the other application that was submitted previously. He will do it. He just, I, I think that the, the, this applicant needs to be held to a standard that will give us the information that we need here. And just, so I just wanted to make that point. I'm not going to say anything else. I, I did have an observation about the fact that in one of the drawings, it looked like the groundwater was shallower than what had been, uh, noted in the, in the application. But in any case, if we have something that is, is overriding and is at least gives you all a basis to make this determination, it would be good. But Matt does this. He, he's capable of doing this. I just think it hasn't been done in this particular application for reasons that don't have anything to do with him. But I, I think that you need to require this applicant to support this application technically with the information that's needed. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
Anybody?
Anybody else want to speak? Anyone in Zooland? All right, so we're gonna...
So I think what, what the board is looking, we're looking for Matt to submit the test hold data, the stormwater information. Did the board want any additional stormwater information like was provided in the prior application, I think? Okay, so, so the test hole data, the stormwater, and then a landscape plan?
Vegetation.
Vegetation.
Yeah. Uh, what about the, the historical? Does that apply or?
I don't know if it applies or not. I know that Kimberly had said this is not a contributing structure and not a contributing property. I don't know if that takes it out of that consideration. I don't know enough about that process to say.
It, it does. And a review, a coordinated review under secret with these agencies that oversee historic preservation and historic homes, historic districts will tell you that if, if a, it doesn't matter whether it's in the district or not, but if a structure is going to have an adverse effect upon a historic district or, or, or building, then it needs to be mitigated. And the only way to mitigate this that I can see is to reduce the size of this huge building. There's just no other way to mitigate this adverse effect on Shelter Island Heights Historic District. No mitigation has been suggested. You know, as Stella has said, it's just been silence. We have been, there have been comments made and there's just been no response, whatever. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I think
You know, just keep it open.
Keep it open for response, yeah, for, for Matt's submissions.
Were you closing it for written correspondence or keeping it open?
I think the option closed, closed for the public hearing of the things that we asked you.
Yeah. Keep it open for written? Yeah, no, I agree.
Could the town please, um, post what he submits on the website?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so. Someone's going to get the...
We need to make a motion, kind of?
To adjourn.
Yeah, to adjourn.
Well, you're adjourning, you're closing the public hearing but leaving the record open. So allow the applicant to submit the listed.
Okay, so we can close the public hearing and keep it open for the applicant to submit his, uh, answers to the questions.
A second.
Do you have a date?
I think the next month, either one month? One week?
Yeah, we'll do the same thing as we did for the previous hearing.
Open for one week, okay.
And just before, actually, before we overpromise and underdeliver, I just want to make sure that we're talking stormwater calculations, vegetation plan, regrading, um, the discussion on regrading and how it will or will not affect neighboring properties, and the testable data.
So cross-sections in the, in the grading data, will you provide that? Cross-sectional information?
Sure. Two weeks.
Two weeks.
He says he needs two weeks.
Two weeks would be better.
Okay, thanks.
All right, that sounds good. Right, thank you. Bye. Two weeks.
All right.
That closes the business meeting.
Ian, back in.
That closes the, uh, business meeting on to our work session, session agenda. We have four current applications in front of us, the Bloom Minor Subdivision. Last month, we extended the submission of the final application deadline to January 11th, 2024. And again, there, uh, the Blooms are hoping to tap into some IA grants that they're required to put in for their house. And, um, tap into the, um, Westneck Water District. So they're waiting to hear from both and we should hear about them shortly. Uh, SH29 Westneck LLC Lot Line Adjustment, we just extended the deadline for the deed due to nine October. The White Roadway Construction, uh, Completion Deadline, we just extended the deadline to nine, nine October. And the Sixth Daniel Lord Road LLC and Three Borough Hall Lane LLC Lot Line Adjustment, we're waiting on updated surveys, uh, from the applicant this last week, uh, due to some deficiencies in their current application. So going down to other business, the, the town board is putting together their budget for 2024 and asks us to put together ours for them. And, um, I've been presented with what our current year budget is. And, um, as you saw, I sent around some CPI information. I did some research this morning. Both on the one-year and two-year, the 2021 to, to 23 and the 2023. It seems like in the last year, it's recognized nationally to be about 12%. And in New York State, uh, somewhere between nine and nine and a half percent for two years. And, uh, for last year, um, nationally, uh, somewhere around 3%. A little north of that, and New York, um, follows that, about 3.2, 3.3%. So, um, I don't know. I took a stab at what I think we should ask for. Last year, I, I believe the town board granted a 6% raise for us. Is that, does that ring a bell, Amber? And I think that was mainly because of understanding that we'd be taking on wetlands reviews. There's extra duties for us and there was similar, a similar increase for the zoning board of peers, fields. Uh, so that was intended for, um, a, an additional amount for the added work. But from my research, it seems to be right in line with the CPI from last year. And so I think we can, you know, at a base level, ask to be matched this year with CPI of 3% following the 9% average over the two years in New York State. But that brings, you know, right in around where it should be for, for the change, not for the additional, um, amount of work we're taking on. So, um, I'm personally comfortable with staying with the 3% and, and, um, top of last year's 6%. I don't know if you, but that doesn't, do you guys feel like you want to be compensated a little extra for what has been transpiring, the amount of work we're putting into these wetland applications?
Yes, because today, you know, um, for the meeting.
I, 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 that's why I'm asking. So right now, with last year's increase of 6% and this year's of 3%, we're just following CPI.
Well, that sounds reasonable. Thing about inflation, it's, it's contagious. So, you know, things start posting more for me. We want more money than the town wants more money than, you know, because. I agree. So I think we want to be, we want to be careful. Easy on the taxpayer.
I'm certainly not doing this as a moneymaker.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Yeah, I thought this was a volunteer job one.
Yeah, and I agreed to, I did too. And I was surprised to get a little bit of hype and so to call it.
I mean, we, we have been doing definitely more work since we new board, a real position. But I would say this appropriate answer, 3%. I don't think.
Right. I would also argue there was a stretch for the last couple of years where we were undertaxed.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Before, before you.
I'm just trying right after the party's over.
All right, so I was
I think it's fine.
So I was thinking of 3% increase, asking the town board for a 3% increase on salaries. As far as equipment, we've been charging, uh, have a $100 line item for many years. I don't think we ever really spent it. One year we bought a microphone or something. Tape recorder, sorry, to record ourselves. We don't do that anymore. So I think we can keep the $100 there. Again, that. Office and miscellaneous expense at 600, we've spent $403 already this year. Christina, maybe you better speak to office expenses?
Yes, I think that's sufficient. It's rarely used, uh, in that
Yes, I think that's sufficient. It's rarely used in that amount. This year we had a larger expense because we order all the.
The signs.
Yeah, there was the, the boards, actually, the boards haven't been even paid yet. I'm still waiting for the invoice. So this year was exceptional because we needed equipment for the wetlands.
Yeah, but generally we don't even burn through that, 600. That can stay as well. Training, 3,000 is what we had budgeted. We actually sent three people to the associations of town. Usually we only do two. I'm comfortable with maintaining that $3,000 amount.
It, it was very bad.
So I don't, but we're under budget for that item, so I don't think we need to ask for more. Printing and advertising, we have it down as 200. But we are, we're doing a lot more ads in the Shelter Island quarter for wetlands notifications now. So I'm kind of thinking doubling that.
Yeah.
What is it, 200?
200.
I would go with 1,000.
1,000?
Just let's say, maybe 800, just because if I'm thinking, average ad is about between 50 to 70 dollars, depends on the length, plus the fee David on the top is 25 dollars.
So $100 a pop?
Pretty much. If we have more hearings, it's, it will be 120. But if they're every hearing, every month, you know, it will be more structured.
Okay, so 1,000 for that. And then the last and the stickiest is professional services. And we don't really have a full sense, a track record yet of what that's going to be, say, per wetlands application or, or per lot line. We've, we've currently have $30,000 in the budget. I don't think we've ever really used that other than maybe the white subdivision or, or something.
You know, I was thinking too today, when you brought up the issue, I said, you know, last year, I think there was five meetings that we didn't even have to come to.
Yeah.
Because it was just reviewing your, you know, giving your recommendations to the Town Board regarding the wetlands applications. So now, we're, we're, you know, need to come to more meetings, that, that affects it as well.
Exactly.
Because of the change.
You can just tell by this month.
I think two or three years ago, though, both offices were fully representative at just about every meeting.
Okay.
Paul Mobius would, on occasion, we would even meet twice a month.
Yeah.
And you guys were both, and then Paul Nobius, when it was a really light meeting, he would say, don't, don't come in.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know what that number is. Um, it looks like, Joe, you're putting about three hours into every memo. It's, I mean, I've seen three and a half, but, but the last one you did three, so it seems like it's, there's going to be some more efficiency, but it also depends on the complexity of the item. I don't have a, because the way you're, about your invoice isn't itemized per.
Right. I think I can probably figure that out, though, maybe a little. And I think it'll, obviously, as we spoke about before.
You standardize a form.
It'll be.
And now it should be easier. And I know you were talking about using your paralegal a little bit more.
And I think also, you know, if, I don't know, like certain things like notices and if, if you wanted to internalize that here, that's a little more work on you, of course, ladies. But that might be something that, it may be an option down the road too, that, you know, I know when I was in East Hampton, I, they used to, the staff would do the public notices, some of the resolutions, and then just send them to meet a review.
Christina, you do that for the ZBA, right?
I do that for the ZBA, but wearing different hat.
Yeah.
Right. So, I mean, something to.
Okay.
Think about that.
And clearly, we're not going to have a $10,000 invoice going forward. And we're, we have a current budget of 30,000. Would you think 50,000 is enough? And just to see how things go, add 20, just for the first year and, yeah. I agree.
And that would be for the professional services and the extra printing, right? Just professionals, yeah.
I would also like to address our fees as, as we do every two years. I don't know if today is the, the best time, but we certainly can go through what I've just put together. So are you guys happy with that 50 number?
Yeah.
Yeah. On this spreadsheet that the town Shelby sent me, on the bottom line is PB fees subdivision. Is that, what is that? Is that actually income taken in?
Could be.
Adopted for 4,000.
With it for us is.
Yeah, so that would be the fees that we charge. And that corresponds to that breakdown that she gave me this morning that was updated. So, so far this year, we've, we budgeted that we would take in 4,000. We've taken in 2,420 this year. Last year, we had budgeted 4,000. We took in 2,310. So with the wetlands applications, and especially if we raise them, we'll take in a little bit more. Should we, it, it, it kind of seems like this line item of 4,000 reference about 10% of our overall budget. So maybe we up that to 6,000 in fees?
So, so that is revenue, that's, the 4,000 is anticipated.
Anticipated revenue.
Yeah.
And so if.
So we're heavily under the revenue.
We're under revenue. But we're also right now taking in wetlands applications at $250 an application, where I really think they should be somewhere between 7, 750 and $1,000 per application to cover, not to fully subsidize the whole process, but to at least bring it to par with, with other.
Yeah, and that, that will be something that also will be off for this year because all these applications have been submitted to the Town Board and the check went to the Town Board budget on, on their revenue.
Oh, even this current?
Yeah.
These current few, okay.
I think it also depend on the complexity of it. If you're doing something really complicated like, like this, look, this. This is an RMI on versus like, a guy who wanted to move his.
I think it's too hard to parse on, I mean.
Yeah.
Looking to ZBA, they basically charge a flat rate. They have different categories.
Could it be like?
Up to two variantists, and then they have a bigger category for more, and then they even add a top.
Do we have any, like, com- comparative pricing on what some of the other towns?
What other towns do?
Can Loth, Lothian, do you remember or?
Oh.
Could it be?
I don't know.
Well, I, I think, I think one is, I would like to, to have our fees increased across the board for the CPI between July, we last updated this July 14, 2021. And so we're, we're two full years, and we saw the CPAs, not CPIs, 9%. I'd like to go to 10% on all the fees across the board, just to make it easy. And then the question is, where do we stand with wetlands? And I, I think 250 a pop, that's way too low.
So you're thinking to go from 250 about to 700?
750, I'm thinking, because how did, how did the Town Board review their pricing on wetlands applications? I don't know if you guys were even around when, and then that was established or what the thinking was behind it.
I don't recall, but we've adjusted that in a number of years, at least.
Wait, so it wasn't part of the building department now, pricing upgrade, so it hasn't been touched in a while?
So I've been focusing on bringing the planning board up every two years or so, so.
So it might be appropriate that at this time, two years later, too. Especially now, not, you're not taking all the income in these applications, but you're having.
Just subsidize a little bit more. I mean, at a certain point, the applicant has to, they have an application in front of us, they're asking us to do something. We're, and we're paying professionals to assist us with it. But we're also doing a service to the town by protecting the town too.
I will say too, not to interrupt, but some municipalities actually charge the applicant for the consultant's time. So as part of your, don't.
We were always told that we weren't allowed to do that.
You know, Sagaponic does it. Snake Harbor.
I think villages are permitted to do that, but towns not.
The towns are not, okay.
Looked into that before.
Have you?
I have a question. It's like the card, well, actually, that card is mine, but if someone had to resubmit something that they wouldn't be charged against the application unless the, the time on the application ran out and they had to actually start all over again, then they would have to pay it again. That'd be my only question. How would we handle if they, if they had resubbed something?
Well, usually they got paid again.
I mean, I mean, I don't know.
No, if the application, hearing is open, they're allowed to change the plans during the process. So that's one application at the beginning. If the application becomes stale, it will be up to the board how they decide to proceed moving forward with it.
So like, I haven't talked about Hill's Tam yet, 169.
Right.
Right? So that was put on complete hold, and then a new application is added.
To put it in perspective, zoning board had these applications and they became, they established internal policy, basically, for the application to be active for a year. If they don't hear any, about any updates for a year, that's when the applicant has to resubmit and start from scratch.
And so.
And pay any fees.
Yeah, so I mean, that, we could mimic that policy for now.
It sounds good.
That's what was kind of.
Matt's applicant hasn't been, it hasn't been a year. You've spun it around pretty fast, so I'm not, I'm not so worried about it.
Just out of curiosity, what if that's something like a white subdivision? That's been going on for so long, and there's been so many modifications, and have any additional fees ever been paid?
Well, when they did the, the adjustment, I pushed, the board pushed them to permit, submit a full, full fee on all nine lots, and they fought that hard. But it proved to be the right thing because we far outspent our fees. And it was like $11,000 in fees, and we spent more than that just on all the time and reviewing it and, and going back and, they're constantly asked for more and different stuff, so. And again, we're not here to fully cover ourselves because there is some, a level protection or service that we provide to the entire town as opposed to the specific application. So.
East Hampton Town just is, for subdivisions is $1,000 per lot plus 800, or $1,000 application fee plus $800 per lot.
So for, is that a minor subdivision?
They do subdivision, yeah, so their minor one is 1,000 and then their regular one is the same.
So for a minor, and I guess it's similar with a major, we're a $130 base fee plus 540 a lot, and then a $660 secret review fee. So we're substantially less than other towns, even with bringing it up 10% as we discussed.
I mean, we can look upset, you know, just kind of the East End towns and kind of get a comparison.
Kevin did that, the last, McGowan, Kevin.
Oh, he did.
Your office did collect all these fees from other towns. We did look at it all. And I remember at the time, Paul Mobius really wanted to keep them less than other towns.
Yeah.
Helped our household and laid back, so.
I know East Hampton recently updated their fees, I think about a year or two ago. I don't know if Southampton did or.
Southampton does it almost every year.
Yeah.
So administrative have the $600.
Yeah, the administrative only, administrative that one.
So going forward, we, we make a suggestion, and I send this over to the Town Board, and the Town Board then would vote it in place. I'm making a suggestion we do, for our current established fees, 10%, and set wetlands at 750. So everyone seem okay with that? I'll put it more formally together, email it around, and if you guys all compare, then I'll forward it once. And then as far as our budget goes, we discussed all the items with the one item, the suggested fees that we'd collect. If I move that from 4,000 to 6,000, I'm content with that. Seems okay?
Yeah.
I have one question or suggestion. There is a, some East End has something that's called a renotice fee. So if the applicant, if the application needs to be renoticed by the mistake of the applicant, which would be another $100 or so, they have to submit additional funds. Just something to consider.
Right. Because if the, if it's the issue, if the fault of the reason, and the reason for the renoticing is not on the town, if it's the applicant's, then they should pay for the.
Okay.
Renoticing of.
$100.
In the paper. Yes, because then everything has to be renoticed.
Well, I'll add that to our fee list. I didn't sign up for a slot to meet with. Do you want me to, or are you clear enough on what our intentions are here and I just email this to you? Or do you want me to come in and?
Oh, it's really up to you. Because if you just, if you want it submitted to Kerry and he'll just incorporate it or decide what he wants to put in the supervisor's columns, and then we can discuss it in front of the whole board.
I'm very happy not to come in and waste your time.
Okay.
If you are okay with me just putting it in a list.
Yeah.
Okay, but in my cover letter, I'll explain the CPI research we did. 59 Nostrum Parkway. Matt had some questions for us on the latest ideas he was presenting.
Yep, our general idea is, hopefully it'll become in front of you guys within the next month or two. We wanted to divide it up into multiple lots, five different lots. Have a parkland across or conservation easement or have a preference to be made across the road frontage. So each lot, each of the five lots would have its own individual parkland or conservation easement, which would be 10% of the total lot yield, of the total lot size. And the question is whether that's something the board would entertain with, based on our last conversation, I got the impression that it was. And then the extension of that is if each one of the properties could have a 20-foot wide access easement through that conservation easement or that parkland area, replacing their driveway, getting in and out of the building, or in and out of the property, but have that easement be flexible so that they could, it would be a fixed square footage, but not a fixed location. So that as they're developing these properties over the years, if it makes sense right now to have an easement or a driveway on the extreme northern side of the property, but when they start developing them over the years, it might make sense to move that somewhere else on the property so that that easement location, that access easement could shift.
So do you know of any parkland that has an vehicle access over, obviously, White had the hiking trails.
Right.
But they didn't have any vehicle access over an easement?
No. Not in, in Shelter Island, because a lot of time Shelter Island does not like to have easements on lots. It's hard to enforce over time. And there, there were a couple of instances where there were easements that somehow vegetation was removed. The buffer alongside the road was eliminated. I'm working on a subdivision in Southampton that is requiring a 50-foot buffer along the road frontage. But they, it is just like Matt was saying, they, you can have, in this instance, it was up to a 25-foot wide access way through there. And it wasn't, you know, it wasn't defined so that depending on how the lots get developed, you can relocate the driveway or topography, depending on, those kinds of things. Again, it, it, you know, becomes a question of, you know, how is it regulated and how is it enforced? So years from now, if somebody comes in on one of these lots, well, the building department know, you know, your driveway is too wide or the.
You know, your driveway is too wide or the clearing that you proposed for your driveway is too wide. Or does that get lost over time? I mean, from a conceptual standpoint, I love the idea of having this parkland along Nostrand Parkway, one of the most, the nicest part of of going down Nostrand is all the trees and you feel like you're driving through woods, you know, driving through suburbia. We have permitted separate parcels of parkland in the past. We have submitted where the ownership of each parcel was part of the single, the separate subdivided lot. But the one thing that everyone would have access to, all the members of the subdivision, they could easily access each of those parcels from the road, but it's just really would be more of a Vista thing.
It may be less of a problem if, if, you know, the parkland is owned by the town. Like the problem you were saying before, if it's an individual property, he's gonna really get picked where the thing is, but if it's a town body, which is more neutral.
Would the town necessarily take it on? Because then they're responsible for pruning the trees and taking that added liability if a tree branch comes down and hits a car.
They do that anyway.
Usually it goes to an H O A.
And these guys want to try and avoid an H O A if they can. That's the idea of having an individual lot so that you don't have to deal with their siblings.
So I'd be, I'd be more inclined that these were fixed driveway points than the floating driveway points. It'd be monuments in the ground, so there's no confusion for future for the town or building department in the future. But it would be up to all of you. Obviously, we have time to think about it going forth.
And I can just submit it as six points if that's what the board would be more comfortable with initially. And then we can work it out as we're going through the process because it's, it's gonna be a while.
They had the road coming here behind the land. And this, this property can decide wherever it wants. See, if you have a road coming, he.
Well, this is someone else's road.
No, not here, but he could say he could come in through here.
They're just, they're just doing access for this lot, access for this lot. They don't want a roadway in here, access for this lot.
Yeah, I know, but just for these two lots, then he can decide wherever he wants to go. He doesn't have to go here and this will look a little canopy from the road.
Well, I mean, the two homeowners can choose to put one common driveway there too, right? And what's the difference between having one entrance there as opposed to one entrance there?
Well, because then there's flexibility. You can go here and you can decide wherever, okay, so this road goes up to here, say.
Do you see what? One second. So what Marcus is suggesting is that a common road development back here on this property.
So then this all stays whole and then this, this property can decide whether it wants it.
Anywhere along here. That would, and the property owners that I.
It would balking that.
I mean, it's a good idea because it does provide the flexibility that they're thinking of, but trying to keep each one of these separate, these five lots, separate and distinct from the other one is really their, their primary goal.
As a real aside, you have Forest Avenue is abandoned. Do you have proof that being abandoned?
Yeah, it's.
Because I'm thinking of the one couple doors down where someone planted it and now it's not letting neighbors access the water.
I think Bob Fowler had that done way back when, when he owned all these, all this property and, and I'll get, I think I can get stuff from Brian that they've, that it's been officially abandoned, yeah. Yeah, double check on that though, yeah.
So for allowing Matt to go ahead, are you guys comfortable with the parkland against the road and fixed points coming in?
Fixed points.
That would be. Do you have the photographic information?
I've got, Hammer has put in all the, we're just waiting on this last final piece. He's putting all the plans together so we can get that sketch planned in, you guys.
Next thing, another business has to do with one twenty-nine point two. This is the wetlands code. It's the little bit of text above the chart which says no and yes.
One says no and then.
So the no, the definition of no in the wetlands code is activity not allowed. Colon, however, applications may be processed in consideration of differences between town law and D E C law. If all other remedies have been exhausted and D E C approvals, approval is obtained or a letter of no jurisdiction is applicable. I asked Beth to interpret this and she even spoke to Anthony Pasca and they don't know what it means. I think.
I talked to the town attorney.
He doesn't know what.
Same thing.
I would like to understand it as giving the planning board just a little bit of wiggle room. I'm thinking about the car pay application where they took out, I don't know what the square foot is, but roughly two thousand square feet of asphalt driveway. They put in an I A system. They're adding drainage. Could I, could we give them a little bit of, can we make a little bit of adjustment ourselves within reason? And so is this having this little bit of flexibility, something you guys see is beneficial to our past? And the whole intent is if you do agree, then I would, I would write the town board to say, we clarify this language and find a way of giving us a little bit of flexibility.
What are you trying to say? Let me clarify for me.
Well, they say no. So if in, in the vegetative buffer, there is no new expansion of construction. Carpe is removing, doing all these beneficial, beneficial things. They wanted to reconstruct a little bit of a wood stoop with water, you know, weeping slats between, gaps between the boards, just in a different location. And that new stoop was deemed as new expansion.
But are they taking advantage of the hundred?
I'm just using this as a random. They, they will take advantage of the hundred.
For the.
For their, for their, for their. But say, just want to know if maybe car pay, if there's another application. Whereas the.
So they've already taken advantage of the hundred and this is extra.
I'm just trying to.
So my thoughts on that is that I'm open to it for safety reasons. So I'll give you an example. Rita and I did twenty-six tow drive. The house built in nineteen twenty-six. And when you step out of the house, you step down to a step that's like eight inches wide. See, now the code is you need three feet out when you walk out, you know? And it was an elderly couple. The guy was in a wheelchair and they couldn't get him into and so, I mean, that's, that's what I think, like if, if safety is an issue, because to me it's like a hierarchy of nerves. I mean, wetlands is important, but so is human safety.
And for me, it's, it's a, it's also a totality of the application.
Yeah, I think both of those can be incorporated. And I understand what you're saying, the totality of the thing. If they're doing so much good, if, if we deny the whole thing, the place is gonna stay the same and still have the same defects and problems. But if we allow them to, to do a little bit of this because they promised that they're gonna take out the driveway and put in gravel. Does, what, does the driveway outweigh the small?
Drainage and everything else.
Is the driveway and everything else outweigh that small encroachment or whatever we want to call it?
So the question I would have is what is the little bit of stuff for?
Yeah, that's, but yeah, where do you draw the line is always the issue.
How do you draft this legislation?
How much, how do you draw the line?
It can't be arbitrary, like this person's got this little bit.
And that's why the hundred square feet is something that is simple, that the board is, you know, when the building inspector is looking at a project, he says, oh, you're allowed this one hundred square feet. That's your wiggle room. That's supposed to be the wiggle room.
Applications may be processed in consideration of differences between town law and D E C law. And then it goes on specifically to mention D E C approval or a letter of no jurisdiction. So if the D E C has permitted the work and our town says no, our town can have, be more stringent.
We can be, yeah, I was gonna say we can be more strict. But I don't think this is so much about safety, no offense to us as the owners, but I think it's, it's more about the board and, you know, how, I mean, these, all these applicants, applications that we have are usually the ones like the car pays where it's preexisting too close. It's in the wetlands. It's in there already. So I think it's more about just how much more are you gonna impact the environment? Not so much, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
And, you know, permitting a little bit of expansion with a wood deck, which basically all the water wigs through the gaps and it's, it's the same thing almost as a gravel driveway.
But I think we have to set that measurement and also the example that you gave, they're actually taking the same kind of step, right? And they're just putting it somewhere else, but it's the same thing. So what if somebody was going a little bit more, putting that thing somewhere else or, or not, you know? Do you, they're not, they're not all gonna be like the car pays example.
Well, how do they define diminish?
Oh, yeah, that's.
That's a legal term, isn't it?
Well.
No, but what's the measure?
Yeah, that's, that's the question.
But the building inspector makes like a, you know, a determination of this is the minimums. Just look at it. We don't need to do a wetland application for this, you know?
So could, could we send it back to the town board for their fixing of this?
Oh, that's where, that's where I was.
You know, I was gonna say and have them decide what that measurement will be like.
And I think the town board would want first.
What do you think?
An example for us because we're asking for that.
Okay, so we, we've done the hundred foot exemption.
So the, going to the zoning board, I know it's a completely different animal, but they have the ability to permit a variance and use their judgment to permit stuff.
But that's because they're the zoning board. You're not the zoning.
We don't have that. So is there a way to give us a little bit of wiggle room, a little bit of flexibility to make these decisions?
That's the, I would love to be able to do that, but where do you draw the line? Where, where's a little bit?
That was, of course.
No, and when I was thinking the same thing, that's one of the problems.
Would it be twenty percent of, say if they're removing two thousand square feet, would we be allowed to let them correctly install twenty percent of that again or? I, I don't, I don't know.
You also have got to be cognizant, you don't want to undermine the purpose of the, the original code. The purpose of the original code is within that vegetative buffer is no expansion. You get your one hundred square feet as your wiggle room. Now we're, we're proposing to add more square feet or, you know, if they have these mitigating factors. So you have your hundred square feet and then, okay, maybe you get another two hundred square feet if you're improving, you know, making that, maybe that's the question is what are the mitigating factors or how much do you have to improve the overall property to benefit the whole property to offset that additional square footage? How do you write that as legislation?
Wouldn't that be just a judgment call of the board that's reviewing it?
Right.
Yeah. So how do, how do you write that the?
Maybe that's the way, that's why they wrote the way they did.
I mean, the other thing I could do is maybe it's. Do you think, you think the.
So it could be interpreted to how.
The town has records of, of their discussion of this definition. They must have just, they wrote it. There must have been some discussion of it. Would there be any record that? Two thousand one?
Two thousand one, yeah.
If it was a public hearing, because it was legislation, then tiny minutes or kind of stream of whatever was said. And I have carried over from the original code though, yeah.
Well, the original code was two thousand one, right?
Yeah.
And then the, the new code was two thousand three.
Two thousand one, in my head I put a twenty-one. I'm thinking it's the new version, yeah.
All right, let me see if I maybe, if I have nothing.
You can find out more.
I don't know, give me cases of like a three for one, like it could be three major.
Well, we don't have to, we don't have to jump on this right now. Just think about it, put some ideas down. And I'll try to, I'll try to figure it out. And if you guys tell me next month, just drop it, drop it. Correspondence list. We've been putting together, planning board's been putting together for as long as I know, this long list of correspondence. It says a date, who it's from and references the applications from. The Z B A doesn't have a correspondence list. The town board doesn't have a correspondence list. How important is it to have a correspondence list? I think the Z B A's practice is before each discussion, if there's something that came in that's relevant to that.
Say it.
To that application, then it's read or, or mentioned. But I, I think this is kind of a waste of time and it doesn't seem to assist anything.
I mean, by the fact that we basically glossed over it right at the very beginning.
Uh, there's always a list for, but it doesn't tell you anything.
No, it's what I look.
About it.
Well, can I just ask, was that list created? Because maybe it was filed before I was on the planning board. Was that done because we tended to have so many, so much correspondence that?
I think it's opposite. I think it was.
Mail, mail, tie.
Yeah, because it's a lot easier. These are all emails. It's so much easier to send an email.
It's like took it off the agenda because we had so much
Yeah.
that it was on a separate sheet altogether. And then because we started getting less over the last couple of years, it was reincorporated into the agenda.
But that would mean like just with this last application where there's been a lot of correspondence, you would have to read every.
Yeah, but you don't need to read the correspondence.
No, no, no.
He's just making an acknowledgement of.
Acknowledgement.
But that would save us.
But that's what we did. That's what we did.
It saves us this whole task of accounting of, of the emails. That really doesn't tell anyone anything.
Right. And actual correspondence would be in the file.
In the file, yeah.
So if anybody was interested in the file, they would ask to see, you know.
Would you be comfortable excluding this list from our agenda?
Yes.
From our meeting minutes showing before.
Yes, I would.
As long as there's nothing in the law that we have to have.
No.
Yeah, of course.
Access to.
Awesome, okay. Next thing, the ethics code. You saw Christina's email that came around. I just want to make a point that we need to sign this acknowledgement and send it into our phone. I just realized I did it twice. Did it this week. I had done it about two months ago. So I've taken care of my end.
If we, if we happen to have done it now, can we give it to somebody?
Yeah, I'll, I'll get, sure.
I didn't do the answer.
Did you do it?
I don't think so. I'm not sure.
I only had the one copy.
Can I write on this?
Everyone got one in their package.
Oh, is there, there's one in the package? You want us to fill it out again?
Should be one of the, the stuff. And there was some information of like a. Explanation of it.
Yes, a related version of the report.
All right, that's it for the other business. I'm gonna move on to wetland permit application. So McCann. We have a resolution drafted. And the only thing we were waiting from, I think we discussed this briefly last month. The only thing we were waiting for is for some updated square footage numbers, which we have received. And I, I, I'm very comfortable with moving ahead on this application. I, I don't know what you guys feel. Right, so the square footage numbers were, you know, didn't reach it over six thousand square feet. And I, I think it's perfectly fine, so. If we were going to approve this, would I have to open up the works, the business meeting again?
No.
Did, is this, did we have to reopen to accept anything? No, 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 no. Because it was. It was submitted prior to that, but only in the digital forms.
Oh, okay, so we're, so now the board can just, you can just vote on it.
Okay, so I've read through this numerous times. I think it's great. I like the new format.
Yes.
So I make a motion to accept this determination resolution for the Emmett and Lindsay McCann wetlands application at twelve Western Morland Drive.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So where am I? Should I be having?
Stamp.
Stamp?
Yeah.
It's green.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't have a stamp.
Oh, you have it here?
I have it upstairs.
You're gonna be signing on there.
Great. Um, the car pay application, which we talked about today. I am happy to move ahead on that too, I think they've, they've really um again doing everything right. They've uh brought everything back by um the expansion.
Should everything we asked for.
They are providing the planting plan, they've are providing drywells, um, working out the system issue later on with the town. But they'll have the drywells in. Uh, there any special conditions, you guys think? We've we've had some concerns about parking on this one.
Um.
Everything has to be on site?
Yeah, because there's a easement going down to well, Duke Foster's.
Yeah, one, I know Duke goes, I'm under the impression Duke goes away in the winter. And so they want to do all this over the winter before he comes back.
He's not gonna be there, actually he can't.
Yeah, he did, yeah.
If you. Yeah, I mean, if that.
Actually, no answer. I have a storm answer, those would be all.
Yeah, yeah, but so.
Um, I don't necessarily need one.
Are there any special considerations or just the standard ones because Beth has to write this up?
Yeah.
Can I grab that?
Yes. Um, so just, as in the McCann one, there was.
Do you want to work, walk us through your your questions?
Yeah.
I know there's a list of points.
They um, let's see, so these are the conditions from the McCann, just as an example. Um, prior to any construction, applicant shall install wire-backed soap fence to prevent runoff.
Yep.
Yeah, uh applicant shall remove exist, existing, okay? Um, applicant shall install a new low-flow pump.
I don't, I don't.
Oh, no, I know, I said that because of the area.
Okay, they already have a new well in, so they have to pull the pump out and put a low-flow well.
Excellent.
Okay.
Uh, applicant shall provide install a stormwater collection, a recharge drywells.
Yep.
Uh, okay, applicant.
Obviously, they don't have a good ban on pool.
Right, applicant shall remove the existing asphalt driveway, replace with clean, right, they were doing that. Uh.
This gets into, I think we're, I'm comfortable with just saying clean water previous gravel.
Okay.
Um, as opposed to saying double wash crushed stone, um, I just want to make sure we don't see RCA pop again.
Right. Do you want to say no RCA in it, in the condition?
I I think, I think that's basically in-town code.
Okay.
Um, and Reed is starting to enforce it.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Uh, subject property shall be revegetated in accordance to the landscape plan.
And that's by Kristen Clark.
Um, this permit shall be valid for construction command, oh, that's code, so that's fine, and then upon, and then the environmental consultant stuff, those are all the conditions.
They just sign off on the vegetative plan, right?
Well, they have to install it and then.
And then the environmental consultant will inspect.
Um, you want to make a statement, no blocking access to the neighbor's.
Yeah.
Neighbor's driveway, house? Because even if during the winter, maybe someone is bringing an oil truck or, you know, some sort of check-in on that.
Yeah, taking care of the house.
Did you want, you're gonna be using to evaluate the planting soils, is that?
Sean, Eric? He gave us a proposal.
Good.
I like to think off the top of my head, which four fifty you, property?
Sean's way too cheap. Way too reasonable.
Uh, the next one on the list is Seven Chequid Avenue LLC, do I need to recuse myself?
The record's still open for the written correspondence.
Okay. Um, Einstein Heensley, twenty-eight South Midway Road. Um, I think we were all comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Are there any special additions on that? So the CAC on this one, we've been received a little bit of.
Yeah, the record's still open on this for a week?
Yeah.
Yes.
But for the single purposes of requesting a very specific piece of information, I think, can we go through this just?
You can't discuss it until that, or I wouldn't advise discussing it until the record's closed.
That's why she's here.
Okay, I tried.
You really want to go.
It is a procedure. It's not your fault. There's a question, it's having to do with the fact that that because of the timing of the CAC meeting, just after the planning board.
Yeah, no, I.
We were pushed back a month.
McCann, you just got voted, we'll vote on next, they submitted in September.
You guys just voted on McCann, didn't you?
Yeah, I mean, sorry. Um. They did have some questions about, so we shouldn't, we can't even talk about the CAC questions pertaining to this application until they've submitted the.
Once the record, you need to, you need to, you need the record closed to start discussing.
And we can't close it because we're still missing that one.
Or maybe, yeah.
Can you remind me what that was, yeah?
Vegetation plan.
Vegetation plan.
Alright.
No, it wasn't a vegetation plan because they submitted a vegetation plan.
Oh, no, did it have to do with like the basement, like the?
What did we ask?
You asked it for a parking plan?
Parking plan.
Parking and material.
Yeah, I mean, there is staging and construction, our entrance.
Well, how how soon?
We really can't talk about that because.
I'm actually, I've already given it to you already, it's in there. I think I was just gonna give it to you in a very slightly modified form with bigger letters.
Um.
That's pretty much it.
And we can't change that now. Hi, I I mean, I felt comfortable talking about it, but I I have to go with your advice. Us, you guys.
But I also have a vegetation plan, it needs to be submitted with a stamp.
Let's see, I'm gonna get that to you too. I mean, really, you're not, if you're gonna talk about it next month, you don't have a resolution to vote on tonight anyway.
Well, I was gonna say, we, okay.
You know, I don't wanna.
I I don't know, maybe we could draft a resolution with a few points that we're talking about and then maybe be in a position to receive those documents in a week and then vote on it next month, just trying to let you go on, because I, I know you've been on hold for quite some time, I look, I get on the road, so I, I've been following what's going on.
We'd love to have it approved next, we'd love to have it approved tonight, obviously.
That's not gonna.
If we can, you know, we can get to the information within a week so that it can be approved.
Then we can't give you any pointers to draft a, draft a base resolution. Because there are some, there are some questions that the CAC had too, but um, well, one in particular.
But I think we we do have to follow procedure.
Okay.
Because that's what our whole board is based on. As much as I would like to.
If you guys.
What, once the conversation of, the the work session conversation is over, I got a question for the board. That I want to interject, but I'm not supposed to.
For this application or?
For, you know, when we're between applications, so we're not, you know, because I'm not really supposed to be interacting with you guys during a work session.
Oh, I know that.
So, um, but it it just has to do with timing, if if the hearing gets closed, you can't talk about it until the work session, which is the next month, you can't give Beth or Marjorie orders for the resolution that she can't put in until the following month.
That's why I was trying to say, can we at least give some pointers to put into that, the draft resolution?
Yeah.
And we're, we can choose not to vote on it next month, and I don't mean totally, totally can't talk about it all.
You guys may need to consider doing what ZBA does, which is two meetings, one's a work session, one's a hearing, and kind of.
And then it goes further.
You might need to, sometimes they have twenty-minute work sessions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just move a little bit further.
We almost could have done it.
Yeah.
We almost could have done it if the vegetative plan that you submitted was a real stamp. It was just a temporary.
And if I didn't ask for more clarity on the parking and material story.
Well, he's got some things written in there about the.
Well, I I I saw it in the, but I did ask him.
Yeah, I was under the impression that we were gonna get to that information in a week, you were gonna discuss, did like what you did for McCann tonight, discuss it and vote on it next month.
But to be honest with Matt, that is the procedure we did with McCann.
Well, with McCann, we did the resolution. But I don't think.
We did go through the points of McCann.
Right, but the hearing was closed.
Except for one piece of information, so I had to submit, which was square footage, we asked for.
Right, but you guys hadn't discussed it yet. You discussed it and then you just adopted it this.
So can can we add like um another meeting?
Saying, what are the chances, are we able to add a working session in two weeks or something like that, or do we have to, does that have to be advertised?
You can do. But if you're gonna add a second meeting as a standard.
Okay, so let me rephrase that, can we, special meeting in a couple of weeks to get this taken care of?
That's my, I mean, that's one question for us, are we?
You would have the answer, right?
We can.
I mean, you can to just, to take care of this, but I think if you're anticipating the need to have
Then we have to.
A work session meeting.
And in December for next year's schedule.
Add that as.
I mean, is it?
Let's do that, I think.
Are you, do you guys want to have a special meeting in two weeks for this?
What's the date on?
Well, two weeks won't work because we have a board meeting on the twenty ninth, you could do the twenty second of August, which is next Tuesday.
You could choose any day.
Or you could do the fifth of September, which is just the week before.
But it doesn't have to be Tuesday.
Oh, that's true.
It doesn't even have to be a Tuesday, but, because I cover another board in West Hampton Beach on two Tuesdays out of the month. First and third Tuesdays of the month, I cover for West Hampton Beach.
Sounds like it's not gonna be a particularly long meeting.
No, even next week is available.
Does it have to be an in-person meeting?
Yes.
We have to be in person.
Do you want to stay the thirty?
Today's the fifteenth, so fifteen days off.
My, my daughter's having surgery.
No, can't do that one.
Well, hang on, David's not here this time.
David's not here next week either.
And in a week, you guys not get twenty seconds?
He's not here.
Oh.
David's not here.
But the four of us are.
Twenty second?
Twenty seconds is fine with me.
I'm just around, I think that's fine.
I mean, I'd really, let's get it off the docket.
Yeah.
You would really appreciate that.
Yeah, twenty.
I don't have anything going on.
I I can do the twenty second.
Seven P M? Do we have to send notification to the reporter or something?
Uh, it will be posted on website, but I'll let them know, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
I can't, I can't tell how much.
What is the date? Twenty second of August. Yeah. Are you good?
Sure.
Okay, now show up.
We need to sleep.
I don't know what you want the next day, morning, the next day.
Like you can.
Yeah, I think I can do it, I think.
Yeah, what we, what we can do, um, what I used to do is just to take down the notes for the resolution.
So we'll.
Okay.
Discuss it and we'll be voting in September.
Awesome. Start.
Um. Dawson and Diamond. We have Joe's memo and we have the CAC memo.
And we were just there and there's gonna be some changes, I think.
Um, Joe recommended we should have a vegetation plan. Uh, we should have a section through the addition showing groundwater, I I do think that's important. Joe points out that they want a seven-foot-six ceiling height basement and the water tables at eight feet and code usually requires two feet clear of above groundwater to a foundation, so I don't know how it fits without seeing a section of it. Um, but having said so, we can write the applicant and tell them that we need this additional information, set the public hearing and and just keep this thing moving along. Um, what are your, you guys, what's your major concern?
Well. So. This is, this is, this is a one fourteen, right, here's the house, this is where they want to do the addition, okay? Now, the plan was to take this down, move it over to here, so it's in compliance, this is actually about the hundred-foot line right here.
Right.
Now, and the CAC also recommended this, come in here and cut off these stairs.
CAC says relocate student.
You're not in the public hearing yet, so.
Oh, we can't discuss it amongst ourselves, so how we want to move ahead on?
I guess the question I have is, so the, Joe did his memo, right? And then so you're, you're to determine whether or not the application is complete, right?
Uh, they are short of those two things, I recommended a vegetation plan and a section through the um addition to see how it relates to groundwater.
Right.
So it's because of hearing, it requires this.
Right. So then you would ask, you know.
So don't have any of this conversation.
Right, you would wait and.
Okay.
I think we're just used to have.
Yeah, I used to have.
Have a lot more flexibility.
It's like, yeah, the applicant doesn't know that they should be here today for this discussion, that they're lacking some. Matt is here, but the owner is not here and the owner happened to be yesterday, the CAC.
Yeah.
Are you, are you go, okay, just setting this public hearing for next?
Well, it's changed now, you know, with a different idea.
It's not necessarily changed. It's, it's, there's, there's a whole lot of, there's a lot, a whole lot of moving products that have just recently occurred, I'm not gonna, I'm not comfortable saying that the plan has changed, but it's probably right now.
All right, so we just talked and we thought we came up with a pretty brilliant idea.
We'll hold those ideas until next.
Yeah, we can discuss them in the hearing, yeah, absolutely.
All right, so we'll set this for next.
Okay, good.
Uh, the last one is Hills Tam, one sixty-nine Ram Island Drive.
Wait, can I just ask one question about the last one, so we're, we're gonna set it for, for the next meeting in September, but we're also gonna request the things that Joe had said.
Yes, so we'll send him the memo too.
Right.
Let's run it through.
We're, you know, the board's going to be, you know, setting a public hearing, please, for the meeting, provide.
Provide, what's missing?
All right, so Hillsy Tam, one sixty-nine Ram Island Drive, um, Joe, you just gathered, do you do you want to briefly go through what you recommend us to do? And we do have CAC comments on this already.
Okay, just going, just briefly going through the site, the uh, the site's a hundred thousand seventy-two square feet, total site, to the tile line along Gardner's Bay. There's a a bulkhead across property's front of John Gardner's Bay. So if you discount that area, it's ninety-eight thousand six seventy-six square feet. They're proposing, it's, the site is currently improved with house, you know, driveway accessory structure, accessory structures, they're proposing to remove all of the existing improvements and redevelop the lot, um, including removing the bulkhead and replacing it with a rock revetment. Um, and by doing that, they actually have to create the, build the rock revetment inside of the bulkhead, so we will wind up making mean-high water come into the property further and mean-high water is the wetland line.
So I guess I have to just clarify, the bulkhead is existing, instead of just ripping the bulkhead out and then having all this exposed earth, they're gonna excavate behind the bulkhead, put in the rock revetment and then remove the bulkhead, but that will move mean-high water a foot or two feet inland.
Right. Now, they've submitted a letter of non-jurisdiction from the D E C and that essentially pertains to. Now, they've submitted a letter of non-jurisdiction from the DEC and that essentially pertains to the area that's landward of the bulkhead. So the, the, the bulkhead applic, the, the bulkhead needs, will need a permit from the DEC. So one of the things, because on the, uh, the, the site plan that was submitted chose the bulkhead, um, and the stone revetment. So we wanna make sure that when the planning board, if the planning board approves and to cite a, a wetland permit application, that it's clear that that approval does not include the bulkhead and retaining and revetment at this time. Because we really need, um, some input from the DEC, um, the Army Corps of Engineers, if they're involved on that revetment before that we, we move forward.
So that means we don't know where the, um, water line is.
We know where it is today.
Yeah, we know where it is today and we, we know where it's going to be because we know where the rock revetment will be, is proposed, so, you know, it, it migrates in a couple of feet, it's not.
No, that's not major.
Now, almost the entire site, uh, when you look at the grading plan and the work that's going to be done, will be disturbed. Um, there's only a few spots in the fringes where that may not be disturbed.
So a SWIP is.
So a SWIP is going to be required. Now, that's something that you can certainly ask for, for that to be prepared now. If you wish, uh, or as a condition of any kind of approval, that a SWIP would have to be prepared and permit coverage obtained prior to filing for a building permit.
But if we had, it would give us some additional information that would help us make the determination.
Yes, it will help, uh, with, uh, because this is a, a plan, the, the proposed site plan does show drainage structures, but there are no calculations. So we need to, you know, go through that process, get the calculations done. Um, and the application form, it does say that there'll be, you know, a silk fence and a construction entrance and other, uh, stockpiling of materials and uh, other erosion and sedimentation control measures. They're not shown on the plans, but they would be shown on plans that the company has SWIP. And that information might be.
Assistants.
Yes. So there's, there's a lot of additional information, I think, that's, that's needed.
So you're suggesting that they, if I read it correctly, they submit the wetlands application and not the bulkhead. They leave the bulkhead alone because that represents.
Right.
The DEC, uh, the state Army Corps of Engineers, the Department of State, and then a town wetlands. So if they let that completely off, and then they can go for an application on the, for the house and.
Right.
Some of the grading and then come back later. And then the, and then when they do the revetment, if they wanna build a beach, they would probably have to come back to us.
Right.
For another application, but at least they could start working on their house.
Uh, yes, it could take longer for the DEC and the other agencies involved to approve the, the bulkhead and, and revetment.
Yeah, because once you, if you ask them to look at one thing and then you have another application in current, I know they combine everything.
Right.
So the, the, well, can revetment, probably would take longer than just looking at the beach.
Right.
Can I just ask a question, just because I was at the CAC meeting last night, if they take away the bulkhead and build the revetment after the fact, you've just moved the wetlands lines in. In number of, so wouldn't you wanna do it in the other direction because?
But what, what Joe was saying is, we know that's gonna shift us two feet. We, we know that. We take that, maybe, maybe it's three at the max, I can't, because a bulkhead is usually, uh, sheets of vinyl or whatever, they have wood and, and then it really, by the time you get the rocks, you know, aside, we only talk about two feet, so we would take that in two.
Okay, yeah, that's what my concern was.
And we could even call it three feet, just to be a statement.
And the, the plan that had, the site plan that's been submitted, they should, with the revetment, does show a setback from the new line. So that, I think that's.
Top board, if we can solve, you know, new bulkhead. Change there and you guys are doing something over here.
No, I, I'm just.
Um, the new residence, uh, in addition to a three bedroom residence, there'll be a two bedroom, uh, accessory.
Sleeping.
Sleeping building, um, and they'll both be, they'll both use, uh, an IA system. They're both piped to the same IA system. Uh, they have received approval from the health department for that IA system.
Tennis court and another pool.
Tennis court and a pool.
Plunge pool.
A plunge pool.
We were talking about in the office, we didn't know what a plunge pool is, like filled with ice and you jump in, is that kind of thing?
Yeah, it's like a, uh, what they call it when they, uh, Polar Bear Club plunge pool is what it is.
Oh, okay.
I, I don't know, the first time I saw it, too, I thought. And so you all have the same.
Okay.
Um, one of the things that's being proposed is, uh, a cistern, an 8,000 gallon cistern, um, I presume that's for irrigation purposes. Stormwater runoff, um, is going to be directed to the cisterns, so that will be used with irrigation. One thing that we've noticed is they're providing four 10-foot diameter, minimum of 16-foot deep, uh, precast rings for the cistern. On the application that went to the health department that shows topography, it, it appears that the finished elevation in that area is about 14 feet. So if you have one foot of cover and 16 feet.
Yeah.
Of pool, um, test hole data that was provided indicates that, uh, the highest expected groundwater is two. When you, you run the numbers, you want these precast rings are five feet into groundwater. And buoyancy calculations may be required.
Oh, I don't think we. We worry about directly recharging roof water without having it filtered through sand to the groundwater.
Yeah, that's not, these would be cisterns for holding groundwater, actually, I, so it's gonna end up being eight, eight-foot deep cistern.
What about just, or, I'm about to say, which people go to.
Yes. We were talking about different options and it was a matter of, I was concerned about people driving in that area, the brightness of the driveway. That's why I, I like the idea of adding the concrete rings, uh, but we may be, we can look at several different options. It's basically an area for a cistern, it, it really was concerning.
And the current irrigation code, I recall, allows roof water collection.
Up to 10%, yeah, of a lot size.
10%, but you're still gonna have to have dry wells because if you overfill the capacity of the cistern, so you still have to have the dry wells for overflow on the cistern and for the other 90%.
And one other thing that I noticed that there's, you know, there's a proposed propane tank and there's an underground line that goes to the main residence that's under construct, uh, that's proposed and that runs right through where the, uh, cistern rings were proposed, so.
Yeah, because it goes over here to you.
Goes here and then this.
They're, they're in both places.
Yeah.
So Matt, I think it's safe to say we're not ready this set.
That's fine. All right, and I just wanna make sure that my marching orders are clear on this one. You, you want me to take out the new revetment stuff and the regrading? And if that gets approved by the DEC, then we're gonna come back to you guys again for the regrading that's associated with that. So we're basically gonna dissect this application into two pieces.
How quickly do you wanna start building your house?
Yesterday.
So then you've answered your question.
No, I mean, I don't think, I, I think the board needs to hear from the DEC on, on the revetment and bulkhead issue.
Oh, you think we should?
You should wait for them, the DEC to.
So you're, I, I thought you were suggesting that we take it out.
Take it out, yes, that's what I'm, I would recommend, that it's removed from the application and then the second application comes in just for.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, no, okay, I thought you were saying we should wait on the main application.
Just wait on the DEC. And one minor, there, there was, there's a substantial landscape plan that was proposed. But in the plan.
I saw that very good catch, was I.
Thanks. They, they have periwinkle as one of the ground covers and it's listed on the CAC as something not to plant, invasive species. So perhaps something else can be chosen, uh, to replace it. That's, that's not on that list.
And we'll forward you the Joe's memo and. And the CAC, did you get the CAC? That came around late this afternoon, too.
They already posted on website.
Oh, it's on the website. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't let you speak in between, I didn't let you speak in between applications. You were gonna say something?
I forgot what I was talking about.
It was about timing or something.
Yeah, I think you did.
Oh, no, you're talking about. I just got coffee.
I, uh, make a motion to close the August 15th planning board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All fair and. Where everyone heads out, one last question. Are we, are we done with the recording and all that?